Good morning. The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, September 10th is now in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off. And if you have any conversations to have, please have them outside the room. If you are a member of the media, except for Adam over there, find a space in this corner because that spot is very active. And we want to make sure there's an ability for people who are at the table to be able to make their way here as efficiently as possible and as safely as possible. In conformance with the open meeting law, I am informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. If you're here to speak in support or in opposition to a project, please put your name and address on the record and tell us the reason for your support or your opposition. If somebody else has already stated what you intended to say, either in support or in opposition, put your name and address on the record. Now, Craig Galvin has resigned from the board and we offer him thanks for his years of service on behalf of the City of Boston and of the residents of the city. As a result, we have a five-member board today. So as many of you know that you need all of us to concur to get your project approved. Administrative deferrals are available if you so desire. So please make your request when you're immediately up at the podium rather than go through the process and then ask for the deferral. Mr. Fortin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of August 13, 2019, and August 27, 2019. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Who's here from WCVB TV? Did you want us here?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay.
Going to call the first order for extensions for 9:30. Calling BOA 575-700-65 to 73 East Clotted Street. There are also companion cases, BOA 575-702-67 East Clotted Street, BOA 616-980-9 to 11 Hillsborough Street, BOA 617-017-13 to 15 Hillsborough Street, BOA 617-030-21 to 23 Hillsborough Street, and BOA 616-977-25 to 27 Hillsborough Street. Name and address for the record, please.
My Lam, 21 Batch Elder Street, Roxbury.
So tell us why you're requesting this extension?
We'd like to request the extension to give us more time to go to construction closing. We're in the middle of construction closing on our financing and we expect to start to break ground sometime late October or early November. This is an eighty-unit affordable housing and workforce development project. We get a lot of public subsidies from different lenders. So the timing of when the lenders came in really pushed out our own timeline.
And the permit is still valid?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
For one year, right?
Yes.
Is there a second? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BOA 734-943-33 to 35 Noel Street. Is Noel Street here? Name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Demambro, 3335 Noel Street, Rosendale.
My name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project and my address is 142 Berkeley Street in Boston.
And why is there a request for an extension?
We've been making progress. We have the BPDA approval. That was required as a proviso, but the owner needs some more time. Things are more expensive than we thought and we're just trying to get everything lined up, so we'd love to proceed.
What was this? This was an addition, right?
It was two parking spaces on grade at the side of the house.
Yes.
So there's quite a bit of work to put in a retaining wall and work needed for these parking spots.
Okay.
But we'd still really like to do the work.
Okay, and the permit's still valid?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion. It's been...
For one year?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Is this the whole property was that far?
Noel Street?
Where?
Noel and Rosy?
Calling the next case, calling BOA 663-708-275 Webster Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Annalee Parslow, 275 Webster Street.
Ma'am, are you two together?
No. Oh, I'm not supposed to sit here?
No. If you're an applicant, you get to sit.
I just have trouble here.
You can sit in the front row. Seat just opened. Please put your name and address on the record.
I have it, no.
Oh, sorry. She did. Okay. So please tell us what the reason for your request?
The reason for my request to extend is we have been working with Boston Water and Sewer over the summer. They had a few comments on our plans. It went back to our engineer, Joe Porter of BTP. And he had more comments to answer. So it was just timing. And now they want to have us have an infiltration system.
So you're still working with Boston Water and Sewer? And the permit's still valid?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept for one year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the last case for extension, calling BZC 331-17-372 North Beacon Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Stephen Miller, Attorney General Miller, 28 State Street, Boston, with Attorney General Shay, resigning the property owner. We're seeking a one-year extension of this site. Madam Chair, we're working on this site. We've had discussions with the butters and with the District City Councilor as far as developing this site. It's turned out that there are title problems.
Okay. So you're resolving the title issues and the permit's still valid?
Yes.
And that's why you need the extension?
Correct.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to... Go ahead, Chris.
Motion to extend.
For one year?
One year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case for G Card, calling case BOA 977-342-180 West Canton Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a one-family dwelling with a full interior renovation in the existing brownstone. Work includes new finishes, MEPs, fire alarm, fire protection. Violation's Article 32, Section 9. This is in the groundwater conservation overlay district applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant 180 West Canton Street Realty Trust. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a single-family that involves a substantial rehabilitation and therefore requires a conditional use permit for the installation of a groundwater recharge system. And we have our Article 32 compliance letter from Boston Water and Sewer Commission.
We also have the letter, Madam Chair.
Christian?
Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we also have the BWSC approval letter.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 977-383-120 Brookline Avenue. This is a core shell work, exterior site and landscape improvements to include selective demo, utility stub ends, exterior storefront improvements to prepare shelf space for future retail build-out. Violation's Article 32, Section 4. This is in the G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Momney with Goldson Stores, 400 Lanter Avenue. With me is Mike Fitzpatrick from the appellant, Fenway Enterprises, 120 Brookline Avenue LLC. This matter relates to a G Card conditional use permit. Received the BWSC compliance letter and letter from the civil engineer of record. Those were included in the application and we have copies available today. Happy to address any questions.
Madam Chair, we do have the letter from Boston Water.
Christian?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we also have the BWSC approval letter.
Thank you. Do you have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Counselor address, please.
Hold on one minute. For those who are not in the room, this is a five-member board and you can request an administrative deferral. If not, and your case goes forward, you will need all five of us to be in support of your proposal.
I'm the first one on the list. I'm going to ask for the call.
You've got the counselor at the podium.
Just...
We'll take it.
Good morning.
Hold on a second, sir.
Madam Chair, I'm Mr. DeBordman.
Hold on one minute.
You're Boardman Street?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, calling BOA 938-015-31 to 33 Boardman Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Bahi Nikpoor, 146 Bunker Hill Street, Charleston. Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning. At this time, I would like to ask for a deferral.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have a date?
We have a date of October 29.
10/29 at 10:30? 10:30. October 29 at 10:30.
Thank you. Address, please.
18 Crestway Road.
For the record, calling BOA 874-130, 18 to 20 Crestway Road. Name and address for the record, please.
Tim Johnson, Architect, 190 Old Colony Ave., Boston. Madam Chair, members of the board, it's been a long approval process, but after five redesigns, we have a lot of support for this East Boston project. However, this coming Monday night is the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council meeting and we'd like to present the final design to them. Therefore, we respectfully request a deferral for this project.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
You also have a date of October 29.
At 10:30.
At 10:30.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Address, counsel?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds, 245 Sumner Street. Two addresses, Mr. Secretary. 48 Geneva and 58 Lubec.
For the record, calling BOA 972-965-48-GENEVA STREET and case BOA 972-963-58-LUBEC STREET. You've already given your name and address, so don't tell us.
Madam Chair, my client prefers to proceed with the seven-member board.
Thank you. May I have a motion for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
Also, October 29 at 10:30.
Thank you very much.
Address, please.
296 Cambridge Street.
For the record, calling BOA 967-897-296-CAMBRIDGE STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Miller, Attorney General Miller, 28 State Street, Boston. My client is requesting a deferral for a full board.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date?
10/29 as well, at 10:30.
10/29, thank you.
Madam Chair, can we just hold a little slower? I'm having trouble catching up.
Okay. Okay, let's...
Address, please.
34 and 36 Belmont Street in Charleston.
For the record, calling BOA 967-782-34-BELMOND STREET. There is a companion case, BOA 967-781-36-BELMOND STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Tim Shan, I'm the architect for the project and we're waiting for a full board. We're going to take a department for a full board.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also, a date of 10/29. I'm sorry, did you take the vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date is 10/29 at 10:30.
Address, please.
416 Beacon Street.
For the record, calling BOA 970-404-416-BEACON STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Edric Van Buzycom. I'm the architect for the project. Address is 1310 Broadway in Somerville.
Sir, I just want a correction. Is it Beason or Beacon?
Beacon.
It is, okay. I just felt it wrong of this.
We would respectfully like to request a deferral to the next administrative deferral.
And so I'm looking at this. I'm having a hard time figuring out what is actually proposed here. So this is a conversion to a fraternity?
No, this is an existing fraternity. In order to provide a compliance alternative for handicap accessibility, we're proposing a roof deck to be built on top of a one-story garage in the back, in the rear of the property.
Okay. So may I... There's a request for a deferral. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date again?
You'll also have a date of October 29 at 10:30.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 930s? Madam Chair, we do have a postponed case. 97 Salem Street is going to be heard on October 29 as well due to updated refusal letter.
May I... And it's going to be at what time?
October 29 at 10:30. I'll make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's when we will hear it. Can you please, ma'am, talk to one of the ladies on the side over here? She has a question. Okay, let's...
Hold on, Madam Chair. I'm trying to catch up myself here. So the first case?
Hold on just for a minute, please.
All right, I'm going to call the first case for 930s, calling BOA 977-795-82-ORIENT-AVE. The Orient Avenue here. This is addition to change occupancy from a one-family to a two-family dwelling and extend living space into the basement. The violation's Article 27T-5. This is in the East Boston iPod applicability and Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Ten feet is required. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Derek Starr, a busy specialist with the firm of Dobbs and Wilkerson. Today, the architect for the project was Christopher Roberts and the owner of the property was the rear of the room, Mr. Anthony Pollock. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking your need to change the legal occupancy from a one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. His only suckles trick is two F's, 7,000. Our lot size is 7,500 foot.
I'm sorry, 7,000?
7,500 foot.
Okay.
The violations are the iPod and the side yard setback. The side yard setback requirement downstairs is 10 feet. On one side, we have 8.7. And on the other side, we have 6.9, which is a pre-existing water performing condition.
So both side yard violations are pre-existing?
That's correct.
Okay. So where is the addition going?
The addition is above and to the rear of existing residents.
And tell me, how is the driveway working?
It's an existing driveway. Two parking spots pulling in straight off the street.
And then it pulls into the driveway and not into the front yard?
I'm sorry.
It pulls into the driveway and not into the front yard?
It pulls into the driveway...
Off to the left.
Right. It's offset to the... As you're looking at the house from the street on the left-hand side of the property.
And tell us about the extension into the basement?
So right now, there are three existing rooms that are downstairs in the basement. So it's essentially just capturing that space in the unit on the lower floors.
So... So this is extension of Unit 1 into the basement? Are utilities separate?
No. No.
Okay, and what's the use of the space in the basement?
Would be residential.
What residential?
Like a living room.
Okay.
Family room space.
What's the floor ceiling height?
In the basement, it's 7.6.
7.6. Okay. How were the plans, Mr. Ollin?
Well, they actually don't show the utility or mechanical room. Where are they?
The... Well, it's basement level and it is... There is a... There's a space on the existing condition plan, X1.1. It's simply called out as basement. It's the space on the right front side of the home.
Well, I'm looking at X1.1 existing basement. I don't see any mechanical room.
Right, so there's a room on the left-hand side. It's the front space.
The one in the basement?
Correct, yep.
Well, there are two of them.
Well, hang on, hang on.
Yeah.
Does that have the mechanicals for both units or just for the Unit 1?
No, currently, it's a single family.
Do I understand that?
Yeah.
So the issue of that...
Yeah, it's one heating unit for both rooms.
Okay, so I'm interested in the proposed. Will that be mechanicals for both units?
Yes, sir.
And how will the access to that mechanical room from the upper unit be?
There's two accesses, one from the first floor down into the basement.
No, I'm talking about the second.
And then there's a second means side door.
So from the outside?
Yes. Existing side door.
So it's the basement space that says 19 feet, 19.7 feet by 15.5 feet?
This one right here.
Yes.
I mean, you are... The second unit is supposed to have separate means access without going outside.
We are. On the addition, of the rear addition that we're proposing, we'll have a second means going out.
You can always have mechanicals inside.
I'm talking about internally.
We do have one, from the first floor down into that...
I'm in the second unit.
Oh, the second unit.
There should be an internal separate access to the mechanical room from the second unit. It's not involved going outside.
Yes.
Answered electrically. Thank you. And I'm sorry for the confusion. The mechanical spaces for the second unit can also be upstairs in the attic level?
Okay, you really should call it out on the drawings. Okay, so I'm... Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion for no...
We haven't had testimony.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and I would like to go on the record in support. This project had the support from the abutters and there were no concerns during the community process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council. Lydia Edwards, the council, would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the variance request, but also the motion will include no building code relief, so you'll have to deal with the issue of access.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam. The next case, calling BOA 965-725-42 to 44 South Russell Street. This is the removal portion of the roof to install a new dormer on the rear wall and the roof deck with new steer and hatch access. Install new bathroom and interior finishes and install associated new mechanical and electrical work. The violation's Article 15, Section 1. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 19, Section 1, the side yard setback requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Luisa Butler, 4244 South Russell Street.
And Timothy Burke?
Go ahead.
The architect, 142 Berkeley Street.
Can somebody please help us and ask the people in the hallway to keep it down? I'm having very difficulty hearing the applicants at the table. So please tell us what's being proposed. Thank you.
Luisa, 42 and 44 are two traditional Beacon Hill row houses that were combined many years ago into one four-family unit. And Luisa's lived there all her life and she's looking to make the top floor a little more usable on the rear of this whole row along South Russell Street. Almost every other house has added a dormer to get that extra headroom. So we're asking permission to do that dormer that would give a much more usable space on the third floor.
And how many square feet is this proposed addition?
The FAR goes up very small because it's mostly... It's just the sloped roof area. So I want to remember it was around 57 square feet of extra space. The FAR changes from 2.59 to 2.61, where 2 is the maximum allowed in this district.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, drawing through other quarters, there's a hatch, access.
Any questions from the board? And there's a roof deck also, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Shanice Pimentel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant completed a successful community process and received no opposition. The Beacon Hill Civic Association also submitted a letter of support for this proposal. We ask the applicants continue working with the abutters, but at this time, we have no questions or concerns, and the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of the proposal. Thank you.
And I have the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. We didn't hear any concerns coming from the community, and the Beacon Hill Neighborhood Association also, um, giving support. Thank you.
Tim, were these violations cited correctly? Because this tells us...
Yeah, I don't feel that the side yard setback is correct in this situation.
No, it's because it calls it as the Charles, as Charlestown, and this is the Beacon Hill project? So the citations, as far as the Charlestown zoning, is that what's reflective in the citations for violations?
Yeah, I did not even note that, that he had done that, but, um, maybe with the side yard setback, but it wouldn't apply on Beacon Hill. In this case.
Okay. Um, so is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
And the BPDA has also recommended that windows be removed from the zero lock line wall. Could we include that in our proviso, please?
Uh, yeah, well, that's part of the design review, I think.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 967-381-83 to 89 Queensberry Street. There's a companion case, BOA 967-386-95 to 101, Queensberry Street. This is for 83 to 89 Queensberry, this is to construct an eight-story building, 395 units, amenities, offices, retail, restaurant spaces with subsurface parking garage. The violation is Article 6, Section 03A, additional conditions in a restricted parking district. Article 32, Section 9, this is in G card enforcement. Article 66, Section 8, restaurant is a conditional MFR. Article 66, Section 8, accessory parking, non-residential is conditional. Article 66, Section 42, off-street parking and loading, parking design. Article 66, Section 42, off-street parking loading requirement, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 66, Section 9, the floide ratio is excessive. Article 66, Section 9, the height is excessive. Article 66, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. And Article 66, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for 95 to 101 Queensberry. This is to construct an eight-story, 85-unit residential amenities with underground parking garage. The violation is Article 32, Section 9, this is in the G card enforcement. Article 66, Section 42, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 66, Section 42, 66 dash 42.5, parking design. Article 66, Section 9, the floide ratio is excessive. Article 66, Section 9, the height is excessive. And Article 66, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Chair Robles, members of the board, I'm Peter Kohansky from Goldstone Stores.
May I just, uh, you might not have been in the room, but to remind you that we have, you have a five-member board today versus a seven-member board, and you need all of us to be in agreement for this project to mature.
We, we are aware of that, and we'd like to proceed.
Okay.
With me is Jay Doherty from Cabot Cabot and Forbes, and Phil Casey from CBT Architects, the project's architect. Uh, as you mentioned, we're here on two separate appeals for two components of the same residential project. Uh, it includes a development of buildings on either side of Kilmarneck Street, along Queensberry Street in the Fenway neighborhood. The combined project will transform these two sites, replacing old parking garages, parking lots, and underutilized commercial buildings, with approximately 440 residential units between the two sites, including onsite affordable housing.
And, sorry, how much affordable housing did you say?
The affordable housing program, um, so it's, the, the contribu, a contribution has already been made, um, for, for the creation of onsite...
So there's an onsite...
No, there, there are, a $6 million contribution, and then there will be another 37 onsite units, so in, in addition to the onsite ones created with the contribution, another, another 37.
Okay, sorry to interrupt, so please proceed with the description of the project.
So this, the, the first site, I'll talk first about the East Site project, they are two separate appeals. The site spans two zoning sub-districts, it's located partially in the MFR LS and partially in the MFR II. Residential use is allowed in both sub-districts. The East Site component will contain approximately 365 residential units, a combination currently planned as, as for some apartments and some for sale condominium units, along with amenities such as a roof deck and a fitness center. There's a one-level subsurface garage, parking garage for approximately 150 to 210 spaces. On the ground floor, there's a, an approximately 3,300 square foot commercial space, which is currently planned as about 2,200 square feet of retail or restaurant space, and approximately 1,100 feet of space that the developer has committed to lease to a community organization called K Street Clubhouse, which hosts support group meetings for members of the LGBTQ community for addiction meetings.
Okay, I, I just want to clarify that, um, generally, we do not give pocket approval if, so is the restaurant, is the restaurant use is conditional? We do not give pocket approval for restaurant uses unless we know who the tenant is? Do you have a prospective tenant in mind?
We don't have a prospective tenant at this time.
Okay. And that roof deck, is that, um, open to the entire, all the dwelling units, or just some, some units?
Yes, open to all the dwelling units.
So how are you gonna control for noise?
Well, I think, you know, the, the onsite property manager will, um, there'll be rules and regulations, it'll be a condominium, um, with, with strict rules and regulations as to noise and hours of operation of the roof deck. Um, and the property manager also will be aware of the need to enforce those noise regulations.
Okay. So tell us about the violations, you have a number of violations. Can you, can you walk through them? What's required by zoning and what are you proposing?
For, for sure.
And, and this went through Article 80, right?
It, it did. It's been approved by the BPDA under Article 80.
And does, does Mr. Olick have the most recent plans? Was anything changed during the Article 80 process?
No, you have the most recent, the most recent denial set reflects the current plans. Subject to, sort of, I'm going to...
2519.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so please walk through the violations.
So, the, the challenge of the site is to, is to, um, create a significant number of new housing units, given, given zoning constraints in the immediate neighborhood. So, over the course of Article 80, we, the project went through a design evolution that substantially reduced the size of the project. And what, uh, what we're requesting approval for today, for the BPDA-approved building, our variance is from height, the maximum building height is 75 feet, the project is 90 feet to the top of the highest occupied floor, uh, and then there's a rooftop penthouse enclosing some of those rooftop amenities that I mentioned, which rises to a height of about 104.
And what are those amenities? Is just the, um, the deck and, um, just the deck up there?
Talking to the...
Or access to the deck?
The nature of the amenities.
Just, just on, on the roof?
Yeah, just on the roof. There's a exterior amenity space, and then a small enclosed interior amenity space, about 1,500 square feet, uh, and then obviously a mechanical penthouse as well.
Okay. Okay.
The, we're also requesting relief from FAR. The zoning maximum in both of the zoning sub-districts that the project spans is four, is four, and we're requesting an FAR of approximately 4.7. We view that as, as modest relief, in order to, you know, Phil can talk about it a little bit, in order to mask the building among all these different constraints. There is a rear yard requirement, we're, we're complying with front yard setbacks along both streets, which is sort of the existing building alignment, uh, of, of the block. There is a rear yard condition, where in one place, the, the site is sort of L-shaped, you can see on the plans, we've observed 20 feet along the private alley that's gonna run through to the center of the site. There's one spot on the, on the north side along Kilmarneck Street, uh, where we need relief from the, from the 20-foot setback.
And what, and what are you proposing?
That is, I'll, I'll look it up and get back to you, it's a pretty, it's a pretty cl, it's pretty close to the lot line, those are restaurant buildings, um, that are, um, you know, existing restaurant buildings along, uh, along Kilmarneck and Peterborough.
Okay, uh, okay, beyond rear yard, um...
So there's a minimum, a minimum parking requirement in the sub-district? You know, that's a bit of a vestige of old zoning, developers are finding that, that less parking is, is necessary. Um, that, the minimum parking requirement is three-quarters of a space per dwelling unit. That would require about 273 parking spaces, which we think is more than the project needs, and so we're requesting relief to offer between 150 and 210 spaces.
And you are accommodating it through, um, a parking system? Or is it just all straight spaces?
The reason I gave a range exactly is that there's the possibility that mechanical stackers would be added to get to that higher number of parking spaces.
Okay. And then, um, I guess that covers it, right?
Uh, open space for a dwelling unit?
Mm-hmm.
Is another aspect of relief, the total, the underlying zoning requires 100 square feet per unit, that's approximately 36, 36,500 square feet for a project this size. The project is providing about 25,800 square feet of open space, there's still significant open space on the site, and it's really designed, we think, in harmony with the neighborhood.
Okay. Um, speak, can you speak quickly through, um, the 95 to 101 Queensberry Street?
Sure. That, so that component of the project is on the, on the west side of Kilmarneck. Um, the dimensional relief is very much similar, although that, that project complies with all of the yard requirements. The building is, again, an eight-story residential building. Um, on the ground floor, no commercial space, just accessory to the residential use, approximately 75 residential units, again, with, with a roof deck and rooftop amenity space, there's a one-level parking garage, approx, with somewhere between 33 and 59 parking spaces.
Okay. How are the plans, um, Mr. Olick?
Drawing through fine.
Any questions from the board? And will this project also contain roof deck?
Yes.
Both, both. Christian?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Water Trust, and we have both, uh, the BWSC approval letters for both addresses, in addition, we also have both no harm letters.
Madam Chair, we have the letters from Boston Water as well, for both properties.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
I have some additional support letters, which I can pass forward, I think they're sent...
Representatives of elected officials, please, to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Shanice Pimentel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal has received approval from the BPDA. At this time, I have, we have no questions or concerns, and the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support. I would also like to note that the Fenway Community Development Corporation has also submitted a letter of support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Tim Zerwinski, I'm a senior project manager with the Boston Planning and Development Agency. The 60 Kilmarneck Street project was subject to Article 80 Large Project Review. Uh, the BPDA hosted three public meetings and four meetings of the Impact Advisory Group to review the project under Article 80B, uh, and the BPDA board voted to approve the project on January 7th, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the ZBA board, my name is Richard Giordano, I work for Fenway CDC, I'm the Director of Policy and Community Planning. We're here to speak in favor of this proposal. They, uh, the Cabot Cabot and Forbes, or the 60 Kilmarneck Group, uh, is committing a substantial sum of their inclusionary development policy money to an expiring use project, thereby saving 97 units of affordable housing. In addition, the community benefits and mitigation are outstanding. Uh, they're preserving a recovery clubhouse that's currently operating on the site, it's probably the only LGBTQ recovery clubhouse in the city. It's also doing all sorts of good things on transportation and street improvements. Uh, they're doing community benefits for Ramla Park, for Operation Peace, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
So, we got the letter of support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Perez, representing the Carpenters Union. On behalf of hundreds of our members that live and work throughout the city of Boston, I want to go on record in support. Our members attended the neighborhood meetings, were pleased with the process, and they think this project is beneficial to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record.
Good morning, Carla Moynihan from Sharon and Lodge In, I'm here on behalf of 84-100 Peterborough. Monte Golds here, he's the owner of Restaurant Row, which is the immediate abutter to the front of this project on the east side portion of the project. We have a number of concerns, um, Monte has owned Restaurant Row for 30-plus years, um, we have a shared passageway between the projects, um, that's being temporarily closed during construction of the east side, um, as well as concerns about the building over of that passageway that's been proposed. For the first time, we received an actual abutter, shared party wall agreement, um, last Wednesday, at the end of the day, um, we've tried to quickly work through that. With all due respect, I think that it would behoove, um, the board to, um, continue the public hearing, um, move it over, uh, to the next meeting, um, give us an opportunity to be productive, um, and accomplish that. If for some reason, you're not inclined to do that, and you're inclined to go forward and take a vote, um, we would at least minimally ask that there be a condition added to any such approval, um, of this decision, um, mandating or requiring, rather, that the developer are negotiating good faith, um, for such an agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the questions I did forget to ask you was, um, was the unit, the, the breakdown on the units and the average unit sizes?
Turn that over to Phil. Uh, the average unit size is somewhere in the range of 700 square feet, I think we'd have to give you a...
So how many, how many studios, how many ones, how many twos, and will there be any threes?
Yes, there will be three-bedroom units. Three-bedroom units, approximately 5%. Um, I'd have to give you the exact percentage breakdown, so I don't have...
I was asking about the unit sizes, um, and the unit count for one, two, three-bedroom, whatever.
The, uh, average studio size is will range around 450 square feet.
Sir, can you just put your name on the record?
Oh, sorry, Henry Cheller from CBT Architects.
Okay, studios average 450?
That's correct. Uh, one bedrooms around 600, 700 square feet, two bedrooms 900 to 1100, and there are a few three bedrooms that are 1,300 or so, 1,300 square feet.
Okay, 1,300 square feet, okay. Thank you. Um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And as part of your process, you will be continuing your conversations with the abutter?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 983-061-504, East Third Street. This is to construct a third-floor addition with roof deck on existing footprint, extend living space to basement, full renovation to an existing single-family dwelling. The violation is Article 27S, Section, Section 5, this is in the South Boston IPod. Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions, and Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael McGough, 30 Beaumont Street, Dorchester MS.
Hold on a second, sir. Can you please take your, kind of conversations outside, please? Thank you.
Michael McGough, 30 Beaumont Street, Dorchester MS.
So tell us if you think opposed?
Uh, it's an existing single-family that looking to square off the pitched roof on the top floor, uh, with a small deck off the back of it, and extend living space into an existing finished basement.
And it's gonna stay a single family?
It's gonna stay a single family, yes.
So tell us about the basement, what, what are you... What are you anticipating the use of the basement?
Just a family room.
A family room. And what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
Seven foot nine.
Seven foot nine. Okay, and let's just see. Tell us about that third-floor addition.
Currently, there's a set of stairs that go up there to a pitched roof, and the room has very low ceiling height, so we're looking to square it off. It's going to be a master bedroom.
Okay. And the house will have how many bedrooms? Four bedrooms?
Three.
Three bedrooms. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
I didn't get an opportunity to see them in plans review, so I'm looking at them for the first time.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We held an abutters meeting on August 8. We have nothing but support letters, and also the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association is also in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support of the abutters meeting when well abutters were okay with the project, and Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association also is in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Savi George's office. Would like to go in support of this project. We want to stand behind the abutters and the civic association. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Vice Consulage Michael Flaherty. Due to the communal effort that went into drafting Article 68, the council is unable to support the project at this time. However, due to the fact that there are projects that do have merit, you would defer to the board.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
The plans are okay. I can motion to approve subject to BPDA Design Review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 977-313-708, East Sixth Street. This is to confirm occupancy as a two-family dwelling, change of occupancy from a two-family to a four-family. Work to include complete interior renovation, proposed rear addition on third floor with new roof decks, new red decks and roof deck, extend living space to basement for additional dwelling unit, exterior renovation to include new windows, siding ceramic tire building will be fully sprinkled, and propose five off-street parking. The violation is Article 27S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston IPod. Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restriction. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking loading requirement. Article 68, Section 7.2, basement units are forbidden. Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, members of the board. Madam Chair, my name is Patrick Mahoney. I'm the attorney for the project with the business address of 160 Federal Street. With me is the building owner, my client, Arthur Obraski.
Please, those who are opposed?
Madam Chair, what we're proposing here is an existing building converted, changing a use from an existing two-family attached on the left side to a four-unit dwelling unit with five parking spaces in the rear. There is existing parking access via driveway on the right side. And additionally, there's a small vertical addition proposed on the rear part of the building on the third and fourth level, or rather, which would be second and third level, but fourth living level. The building will consist of four one-bedroom units, approximately 1,000 square feet. Open space is met. There's 800 square feet of open space with the decks on the rear and the roof. And I do believe, although we were cited for side yards, the building is attached, and there's an exemption for side yards, the three-foot side yard requirement with attached structures like this one.
So, tell us about, can you walk through the violations, please?
Certainly. The first violation, restricted roof structure, Article 68, Section 29. The roof deck in this proposed project meets Article 68, 29. However, because it is an existing structure, any change to the profile of the building, it requires a conditional use permit, which is what we're seeking today. And off-street loading and parking was cited. I believe that was cited incorrectly. This is four one-bedroom units, each requiring one parking space per unit, excluding the existing spaces. We have five proposed, so I believe that complies. Basement units are forbidden. There is an existing unit in the basement now. It is likely an undocumented unit, but nonetheless, it is there, so I believe that would not, evidence of that being there before the zoning...
Tell us about that basement unit. What's the floor-to-ceiling height?
Ceiling height is seven feet six inches. Seven feet is required underneath a mass amendment for the building cover.
And window wells have been, will be provided, or...
There's a walk-up access in the rear.
Okay.
And additionally, 27S, interim planning overlay district, because 1,000 square feet is being renovated, it's a substantial renovation, and thus IPod compliance is required.
And so really, the addition that you're proposing is the entire, the entire extension, the third-floor extension and the roof deck?
Yes, and, Madam Chair, the first floor and those decks are existing.
Okay. All the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
I have a few questions. You're showing in the basement on 8201, a bricklet mechanical room, the top right corner?
Yes.
You're not showing any doors. How do you get in?
It's on the opposite side of the stairs, Mr. Ehrlich. So you're right, there isn't a door showing. There will be one.
So the door to the living room swings in. You're going to have to fix that.
That's right.
And on the nice spiral staircase leading to the roof deck, that's good. Right in front of, it appears to be right in front of a window.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you might want to consider shifting the window so it's not, so it's not blocked, the light out from the window is not blocked by the spiral staircase.
I'll make a note of that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We held the abutters meeting on July 29. We do have nothing but support letters on record, and the City Point Neighborhood Association is in support. We know that there is one abutter who is in opposition. We just ask that they work with them to solve their problems. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support of the abutters meeting when found, and the City Point Neighborhood Association is also in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Savi George's office. Would like to go on record in support. The civic association and the abutters support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Charles McCulloch, One Onslow Terrace, South Boston. I'm a direct abutter to this project, and I am in strong support of it. There are three specific reasons why I support this project. The first is that the project proponent is planning to live in the building, and I think he will be a good neighbor to the rest of us in City Point. Number two, he's been immensely accommodating to the requests of the neighbors and the City Point Neighborhood Association by way of removing as many vehicles from on-street parking as possible with the addition of five spaces. He's largely maintained the existing envelope of the building, which is something that the neighborhood cares very much about. And lastly, he's committed to landscaping and beautifying the parcel. It's in disrepair right now, and I'm excited to see a beautiful building built there. And I think that is shown by the 18 letters from my neighbors in support of the project. Lastly, I believe it'll be a net positive for the neighborhood and my block specifically, and I think that's shown by the support from our elected officials. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Aye.
Hold on one minute.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Vice Consulage Michael Flaherty. Due to the drafting that went into Article 68, council unable to support the project, but would defer to the board.
May I put your name and address on the record and tell us...
This is against the plan, right?
Yes.
Marie Morris. I live at 706 East Sixth Street in South Boston for 21 years. This is new to me, this whole thing. I can't hear anything or anything.
So tell us why you are opposed to...
I am opposed to...
Ma'am, ma'am, don't read, just tell us.
I have notes here.
Yeah, okay, just tell us briefly what it is, okay?
Well, first of all, the driveway, two and a half feet of that driveway is, that belongs to number 710 East Sixth Street. So she is the one who will get the fifth parking space, and she is farthest because of that. It's not even, it's maybe 10 feet going down the driveway. There's already damage to the side of her house and bumps and stuff from its original use of only one or two cars. And now they're going to go down and do whatever with the yard, which has a water and sewer thing that nothing can be done there because there's a methane tunnel underneath the yard. And then on the other side of my wooden fence, there's going to be five cars, which is exhaust. It's a horrible safety issue because you have children, elderly, disabled, people going and coming from work, skateboarders, bicycles. You have right across the street, you have Peter Street, and then five houses down, you have Monk Street, then you have M Street going to the beach, N Street because of that child being killed on L Street. A lot of that traffic goes up N Street. Now, they don't have the things for the speed or anything, you know?
Yeah.
So the traffic is a big issue. Safety is a big issue. There's no peripheral vision from my side of the house.
Okay.
I mean, I do feel that as a senior citizen with disabilities, that I have issues, health issues, that I can't deal with the noise and the banging and I will deal with it, but I cannot. I mean, I know things have, it has to be fixed up and stuff, but, and then I go to a two-hour meeting last night, IPod, and on October 31st, it expires, and then it's going to possibly turn into whole new rules, maybe stay the same.
Yeah.
But that's October 31st. And if I, I mean, I know I can't request deferral for another meeting, but I know that's, I think, because this is...
Yeah, no, because this has to go ahead under the current rules. So this has to go ahead. Even if you wait till the 31st, it won't make a difference.
So it's approved?
No, it's not approved. It's the violations stay pretty much the same, maybe. So, so it's already submitted. So anyway, so we hear you about the traffic, the parking, the issues your neighbor has with the, with the damage to our house. Anything else?
Well, it's safety.
Okay.
I mean, it's like, you know, the refrigerators they put outside, and a child would get caught in the refrigerator. All right, all doors off. Okay, somebody gets killed because there's not enough space on the sidewalk and so much traffic, we can't do this anymore.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is anybody else here to speak?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming.
I'm sorry, I'm shaking. I'm not getting any sleep. None.
Is anybody else to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA Design Review with attention to the pitches... Stairs.
Can I just ask about that roof deck? Because it, to me, the, it feels as if the property has maximized its usable, every usable space on it. And I'm just wondering, and that unit already has the deck, and I'm wondering if a roof deck's necessary here for noise, et cetera, for the neighborhood? Because that is its own, so that's the only thing I'm wondering here.
It's in our open space calculation, Madam Chair. In below the height requirement for decks, and that's...
Okay, this is a conversation with the board. Any thoughts on that, board members?
I would leave that to the design review.
Okay. So it's approval with BPDA Design Review is the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff, minimize that roof deck, because it looks pretty invasive on the plan.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 979-536-346 to 348 West Broadway. This is to erect a new mixed-use building with retail store on the first floor and four dwelling units above. The violation, Article 27S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston IPod. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the flood ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 68, Section 8, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the front yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, side yard is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morantzi, I'm attorney for the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is a proposal for 346-348 West Broadway, located next to the building which my office is in. My client is Peter Leo Sakos, developer of the building where my office is. Mr. Leo Sakos owns the property next door, 346-348, which is currently a two-and-a-half story building, contains ground floor commercial space. It's a barber shop with two dwelling units above. The proposal is to demolish the existing building and to erect a new building with the revised plans submitted to the board showing ground floor commercial space and three dwelling units above. I'm not sure if the plans that came over from ISD are current. I believe that the architects' office submitted them after the change, but I will describe what the change is, and they are reflected on the smaller set of handouts.
Mr. Morantzi, the date of the full set of plans is 1/11/19 on the date on the...
1/11/19. So it seems that they caught up, Mr. Ehrlich, but...
What is the issue?
So the issue is, the initial application showed four units above ground floor commercial, four dwelling units, and the revised plans turned that top into a bi-level unit, so it's three units.
So how does that affect your violations?
The FAR comes down a bit, but so initially, this was a proposal for four full stories above ground floor commercial. We had an abutters meeting sponsored by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There were concerns because there is no parking proposed for the building. It's on West Broadway. There is no way to get a curb cut on West Broadway. There is, the building is not a through lot. It does not go all the way back to Adams Street. Therefore, my client agreed to reduce the number of dwelling units to three. So there would be floor throughs on the second and third floors, and then the fourth floor would be a bi-level unit going up to a partial fifth floor.
So tell us about, is there a roof deck proposed? Because they, the front page drawing does show a headhouse.
That's for the elevator, right?
No, I believe that is for roof access, and it's not necessary. Not getting out of sequence. That is a headhouse for roof access, and again, I'm aware of what's positioned on those. It's not necessary. It could be substituted, or a roof hatch could be substituted for roof access.
Isn't, there's an elevator shown in the...
Yeah, I believe there is, and, but it doesn't, if you look at the plans, that is clearly a headhouse leading from the stairway.
Okay.
So if there does need to be an elevator override that's not shown on this, that would have to be there. But there doesn't need to be a headhouse from the stairway for roof access. That could be a hatch.
Okay, and I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt, but on the cover sheet on both, the big set of drawings and the small set of drawings, although the print is so small that I can barely see.
Sorry.
It says four units on both.
Four units total, but it should be three dwelling units, three residential units above.
Both sets of plans, I'm saying.
Saying four dwelling units?
So it's three dwelling units?
I can barely see it, but it says four units there.
That's okay, that's wrong. Yeah, I'm sorry. That is just incorrect on the cover sheet. The plans do in fact show ground floor commercial space of 1,018 square feet. The unit, residential unit one, which is on the second floor, is 13110 square foot, two-bedroom. Residential dwelling unit number two on the second, on the third floor, is a 1311 square foot, two-bedroom unit. And then residential unit three is a bi-level unit.
Okay, so then there is a difference between this and...
Yes, I wasn't sure if they had caught up.
Okay.
It's a bi-level unit, the, what had been a full fifth floor, but the front third that was taken off, so that the resulting unit three is a three-bedroom, 2,578 square feet. There is that setback on the fifth story. The building next door at 350, that is a nine-unit building. It rises to the same height, four stories, on West Broadway. It rises to the same height, four stories on West Broadway. There is the same setback where there is a front patio, a front deck in front of the unit, which is the same as on what is being proposed. There is no deck on the roof of the building that's being proposed. That is a clean roof. As for violations, there's an FAR violation, rated about 4.83. There's a height violation. This building would be 50 feet with maximum height at the fifth-story level. But again, on the plane that's facing West Broadway, it would be a four-story as perceived from West Broadway, matching the buildings on the left and the right. The building on the left has no windows on this lot side. And the rear of this building, 346-348, is actually a windowless portion of the building at 350 West Broadway, which is shaped like an L and comes in behind the building.
Okay, Mr. Marantzi, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Keely Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We held in a butters meeting on June 5th. The only opposition we received is due to personality conflict. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. There were concerns on parking high in density at the butters meeting.
Can you speak up, please?
There were concerns on high density and parking at the butters meetings. And the Saint Vincent's Lower End Association is also in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solomon. On behalf of the Council, Lash Michael Flaherty. There's a group Article 68 violations that the council are unable to support the party at this time. Defer the board.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I can make a motion to approve with BPDA design review with uptake of attention for the head house.
Replace with a hatch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling a last case for 9:30, calling BOA 896-779-779 to 779A, Dorchester Avenue. This is a proposed rear and vertical addition and adding roof deck, expanding existing storage to the first-floor dwelling unit, relocate first-floor dwelling unit into the second floor, and the second dwelling unit into the third floor. No change in occupancy. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of an existing non-conforming local retail use. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. And Article 65, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Name and address, for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Excuse me, my name is George Marantzi, I'm attorney for the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by my client and the property owner, John Nguyen. Madam Chair, members, the description is somewhat awkwardly phrased. I'll simplify. The existing building is a two-and-a-half-story building that contains a ground floor convenience store use and also a dwelling unit with a second dwelling unit in the building as well. It's a two-and-a-half-story building. The proposal is to essentially convert it by means of vertical and lateral additions, fill-in additions to create a three-decker, a three-story building. This is a three-story, it's a 3FD district. It is a three-decker zoning district. What would happen with the units is simply the convenience store would be expanded and would occupy the entirety of the ground floor. And the second and third floors would be the two dwelling units. So no increase in the number of dwelling units, no change in occupancy other than an expansion of the size of the building.
So that's the conditional use is the, because this is a 3,000. It'd be the extension of the ground floor retail.
That is correct. So that would be growing in size. The ground floor retail is currently about 618 square feet. After this is completed, it would be about 1,408 square feet. And then the two units above would grow. There's currently quite a small apartment on the first floor. It's about 460 square feet. And then the second residential unit is about 930. The new numbers there would be approximately 1,400 square feet for each of the resulting two-bedroom units. The height of the building will actually stay the same. It's about 34 feet, seven inches to the ridge, to the peak of the existing pitched roof. Even as a three-decker, a three-story building, it's gonna remain at just about 34 feet, seven inches. Violations are cited for the setbacks, but there is-
So point yard setback, yeah, it's a given.
It's essentially a modal.
Yeah, how is your FAR changing?
The FAR is going from 1.07 to 2.08. And the violations, the other setback violations owe to the current structure. And obviously, it's being vertically defended.
And how about the parking?
There's no parking now, no parking is proposed, there's no change in occupancy. As I said, the units are growing a bit in size, including the commercial unit.
And there's a roof deck proposed?
There is a roof deck on top. The roof deck is sized, not sized on the plans, but it's, I'd say it's about 12 by 12, 14 by 14 roughly.
It's sized in the elevations.
Oh, is it?
I mean, it's not called out, but you can see how big it is.
Right, exactly. Yeah, it is 12 by 12.
Yeah.
Okay. How was the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
So access to the roof deck is-
That.
Yeah.
And the roof deck is for the top floor unit.
In the basement, there's a combination of finished and unfinished space. The finished space also has adequate ceiling height, the unfinished space, less than-
Correct. The, there's an existing basement, I think, that's not really changing much. And the ceiling heights range from five and a half feet to six feet nine, five foot 11. Again, it's not habitable space.
Right, so my question is, is there a consistent floor throughout? Or how do you get, how do you get in the finished parts, how do you get the correct ceiling height?
Joe, what's the condition of the basement?
Is unfinished right now.
Are they uniform?
Members, proposed. How are you gonna get it? How are you gonna get the right ceiling height? I mean, you're gonna have to excavate the floor in those sections, right?
I think it's simply crawl space.
Right, yes.
There's no- But you understand what I'm asking? I mean, you've got a basement, and some of it is finished and some is unfinished, and that's fine. But the finished calls out adequate ceiling height, the unfinished doesn't. So are the sections that are finished gonna be excavated? Or how is it gonna, how are you gonna get it?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question is, is it actually finished space? I think it's just a raw basement.
Right, but in the proposed plans, you are calling out in the finished parts a higher ceiling height.
Oh, I see. You're saying words as proposed five-foot-11 ceiling height? So I assume that's being excavated for the mechanicals.
Okay, well, assuming it's not a great, the print should be clear on that. But I'll deal with that in my motion.
Yeah, there's no building code obviously cited. But I think that the plans, when they undergo building code review at ISD, would have to be up to code. And if excavation becomes necessary, it would have to-
I will ensure in my motion that that's the case.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was a butters meeting held on-site by the previous coordinator for this area. And the applicant has worked extensively with the McCormick Civic Association to accommodate all concerns. We'd like to go on record in support of this project proposal, as well as the expansion of a great local business.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Amanda Crowley, Councilor Baker's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Morning, my name is Steve Keely. I reside at 3 Bellflower Street, the butters of the project. And I'm a member of the McCormick Civic Association, and I support the project. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. I come here as both a fellow resident and a fellow civic member, founding member of the Polish Triangle United, which John's in great standing. He's done a fantastic job in the community, is a great civic member and a great neighbor. So I'm more than pleased to lend our support for his project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review and no building code relief.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I think there was a typo actually, Mr. Ehrlich, because I think they're confusing proposed and existing. Because under existing, it says existing seven foot seven, which is higher than proposed. So I think there's simply a mistake in the plans. But we'll make sure it's correct.
I'm gonna call, I'm sorry.
You want to leave though?
Correct. Thank you. I'm gonna call the 10:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30?
And just a reminder, this is a five-member board. And you are entitled to administrative deferral. If you decide to proceed, you need all five members in support of your project for it to mature. So please, give us, give us the project, the address, please?
Address, please. Okay. For the record, calling BOA 948-772-99-BROOKSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Daniel Toscano at 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass. 02109. We respectfully request a deferral on this matter.
And may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please?
We have a date of October 29th to 10:30.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sounds great.
Address, counselor? Address, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Charlie, oh, sorry.
Address, please.
The address is 5 Orlando Street, Mattapan.
What is it? I'm sorry. Could you say it again?
5 Orlando Street, Mattapan.
So you got two cases. Calling BOA 948-520-5ORLANDOSTREET. There is a companion case, BOA 948-519-5ORLANDOSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Charlie Tebman, 15 Broad Street, Boston, representing BT Holland LLC. Brian Holland, respectfully requesting a deferral.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date?
We have a date of October 29th at 10:30. Thank you. Address, sir?
9 Leland Street, Dorchester.
For the record.
My name is John Mahoney.
Hold on a second, sir. Hold on, I'm sorry. I gotta call him for the record first. Calling BOA 975-774-9LELANSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
John Mahoney, 16 Primrose Street, Roselandale. We'd like to request a deferral on this.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We also have a date of October 29th to 10:30.
Thank you.
Address, please?
Companion cases at Pierce and Nahant and 1 Rockney Avenue.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Pierce and Nahant Ave., 63 Nahant and 66 Pierce Avenue, companion cases.
So you have two cases total?
Three, as well as 59 Rockney.
Okay, for the record.
Hold on. These are all individual, individual?
Pierce and Nahant are companion cases.
And what was the third one again? The Rockney? Okay.
So call all, we'll-
All first two.
First two, okay. BOA 981-150-63-NAHANT-AVE. Companion case, BOA 981-146-66-68-Pierce-Ave. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Christopher of RCLC with business address of 415 de Ponte Ave. At this time, we request administrative deferral for both projects.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of October 29th to 10:30. And the third case, is case BOA 965-021-59-Rockney-Ave. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, James Christopher of RCLC with business address of 415 de Ponte Ave. At this time, we request administrative-
May I have a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date?
Also have October 29th to 10:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Address, please?
174 Savin Hill Ave.
For the record, calling BOA 979-866-174-SAVINHILL-AVE. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is George Marantzi. I'm attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. On behalf of the petition, or I withdraw the application.
Make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's a withdrawal.
Which address was that?
174-Savin Hill.
And that's denial without prejudice?
Yep. Any other requests for denial, for withdrawal or deferral? The board will take a, will resume at 11 o'clock.
Hello.
We've got four minutes, I hear.
Well, maybe not quite so.
Four minutes?
We've got four minutes, I hear.
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 The last one?
The last year, who's calling?
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at 10:30 right now.
Oh, oh, so we're at 10:30.
Yeah, we haven't called any yet.
Alright, thank you.
... Commission also had their, that demolition delay was lifted, that's why we're here today. There are four variances, actually mostly historical since the new structure will take the exact same footprint or relatively the exact same footprint of the structure being demolished. And then you'll note that parking was cited, but the current plans do satisfy the parking requirement.
So how many parking spaces are you providing?
There'd be one off-street parking space.
In the side yard?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so lot size, yep, front yard, side yard, okay, okay.
So the applicant, Dr. Plo, he's already moved, actually, he's renting a house on the same street. He's very involved in the neighborhood as part of that. He's got numerous support letters, I don't know if you've seen all of them. I'm happy to provide them.
Hold on one minute. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Towns Rowing is ready.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted a community process back in March 2019. There was a ton of support from Director Butters, and we'd like to go on record to support the project.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next three cases, calling BOA 944-910-88A Valentine Street. There are two companion cases, BOA 944-891-152 Thornton Street and BOA 944-900-154 Thornton Street. This is for 8 and 8A Valentine Street. This is subdivide this already newly-built four-unit townhouse-style building into three independent rowhouse-type style on three assigned subdivided distinct parcels. This building is a two-family and is to be known as 8 and 8A Valentine Street, and its lot size is proposed at 3,951 square feet. This was approved as a six-unit building by the ZBA, later changed to a four-unit townhouse style dwelling by the owner approved by the Board Final Auditor. There are also two other separated properties, 152 and 154 Thornton. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. The lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. This is for 152 Thornton Street. Subdivide this building from 8, 8A. This building is one family dwelling unit to be also known as 152 Thornton Street, and the lot size is to be 1,605 square feet. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. The lot size for a single-family dwelling is insufficient, and Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. This is for 154 Thornton Street. This is subdivide this building from 8 to 8A. This building is a two-family dwelling unit, also to be known as 154 Thornton Street, and its lot size is 1,274 square feet. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. The lot size required to build a dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-toe ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient, and Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Montes Gaines, 2 Ella Street, Roxbury, Mass.
Dorchester, 36th, 20th Street, Dorchester.
This is very confusing to me, so please explain it.
So we came in front of the board, and actually purchased a lot, it was approved for a six-family, and when he purchased it, he decided that it should be a four-family, so we came in front of him. It was approved for four-family condos or townhouses. We then decided that it would be better to have two condos attached, and then the other two in the front have their own water lines coming, come into the building, so they could be sold separately as single-family homes. So we're just trying to separate.
Do you have, I'm having, do you have plans to share?
Well.
I mean, I'm just having a hard time conceptualizing whether all have frontage on Thornton, because some of the square footage is, this is a 3,000 to 4,000 zone, and one of the lots is 1,605, and the second is 1,274. So I'm just trying to figure out how this all works.
It's a corner lot, Thornton and Valentine, so you have, you can kind of see from there.
Yes, yes, okay.
You have 8 and 8A Valentine, you have 152 Thornton and 154 Thornton.
And so 154 is the one away from the corner?
154 is the one on the corner, 152 is the little.
Okay, okay. And each of them, and so the building at 154 is a two-family dwelling? And how, is there parking proposed? Is there showing no parking whatsoever?
I mean, all I've got are plot plans, I don't, so I don't have any.
So they have parking, so they are townhouses, they are built, they're ready. We have an existing water line coming in from Valentine Street.
No, I'm not interested in water line, I'm interested in how.
There are, there's parking, there's three.
There's parking at one.
There's three garages.
So the question for me is that one of the violations that was cited for 154 is lack of parking. So you need to figure out, tell us how the parking is going to be accommodated for all these three parcels.
No, the three parcels, they have, they have off-street parking, they have garages, and three are the units. But when we came before, we came.
Who was your architect when you were here before?
Saki. Yeah, the name is Saki.
You know what, how about this? We're gonna defer this, so that you can bring your architect in and kind of show us how it all works together, okay?
Madam Chair.
Can you explain it?
Yeah, on the 8 and 8A Valentine, there is a driveway that has off-street parking, and then on the 152 Thornton, there's a driveway that has off-street parking. So the, on the plot plans, the only one, and there's, you know, curb cuts for both of them, the only one that doesn't is 154 Thornton.
Okay. And when you came in, you came in just for approval for Valentine? When you came to this board, you just came for Valentine? You did not come for Thornton?
There was four units, we're just trying to subdivide it into three separate buildings.
Three separate lots.
Three separate lots, yeah.
Okay. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, again, it would be nice to have our captain drawing this sort of provide context, but I mean, given that this is just a proposal to subdivide, the plot plans are adequate.
So when did you come into the Board of Appeal for the Thornton Street parcels?
I mean, we came in front of the board for all of them, we came together, just like today, we came in for all of them together.
You came in front of the Board Final Auditor, is correct.
For Valentine, okay.
Yeah, for Valentine, Board Final Auditor.
Yeah, this is, so, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted in a Butters meeting on June 24th, and it was very successful, there was an overwhelming amount of support, especially considering that they scaled it back. They also met with the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition several times, and we'd like to go on record to support the project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion for approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 959.
Design review.
Calling BOA 959-027-27 Thornley Street. There is a companion case, BOA 956-275-27 Thornley Street. Thornley Street, okay. This is, changes to fiber texture new rear exterior stair to replace the inside stair, create storage area in basement, not to be living space, change second-floor pantry to open porch, create a third-floor rear deck, change the first and second floors to open concept kitchen, living room, three bedrooms, two baths. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for building code, sorry. Section 8th Edition, 780 CMR, 1027 exit discharge, 10.27.5.1 location, minimum fire separation distance of 10 feet from the exterior stairway to an adjacent lot line. Exit discharge, exit stairway shall be separated from interior of the building as required by 1023.2, and the opening shall be limited for those necessary for egress from normally occupied spaces. Name and address for the record, please.
Elton Jackson, 13 Pompey Street, Roxbury, Mass.
Okay, this is what we usually do, is the first thing we address is the building code. Will you still be requesting relief, or did you find a solution to it?
No, so the rear stairs need to go down the back of the house.
Do you, Mr. Ehrlich, any thoughts?
The stairway should be separated from interior of the building. This is currently a violation, and you're seeking building code relief?
Yes.
I would suggest you find a solution that does not require building code relief.
So we got approval to turn the two-family to a three-family about a year ago?
Yeah.
Actually, maybe about two years ago. And then in order to have an egress from the third floor outside, we put stairs down the rear of the property. From a zoning issue, according to my.
We're not looking at zoning, we're looking purely at building code, and we need a resolution to that, because we are not really, we do not generally approve building code relief for something like this, where there's a fixable solution.
This is stamped "not by an architect, but by an engineer."
Who was your original architect?
The architect is Jonathan Garland, and the engineering firm, the gentleman's name is Dove.
And did the architect give you a reason why there couldn't be a solution that would be compliant with the building code?
The architect, so, in his mind, he didn't think that there was going to be a building code issue, given that providing a second egress would increase the safety. And then he also wanted the open floor concept for the first and second floor. The way the stairs used to work for the two-family is the second floor and third floor had a single egress down, and so he moved the egress to the rear of the building.
Madam Chair, this is an issue that I think an architect, with all due respect, should be here to justify.
On the other hand, you know, this sounds like, my thought is that this is for, that the architect should have dealt with this to begin with.
Yes.
That should not have put you in this position. So I don't know what the best response is, to come in and walk us around it, or basically we say no to this request for relief, and just move on.
I mean, I guess, you know, fairness of the applicant, I guess I would suggest a deferral.
Okay, so may I have a motion then?
Yeah, a motion to defer. You need to come, you need to talk to your architect and get a solution, and come in with the architect.
Second. Can I, can I say one thing? So, based on my conversations with ISD and Luis, my GC constructed the staircase as it stands in the plans. I don't think any.
It's already been built.
I don't think my architect or the GC.
How did you get caught up like this? So listen, your architect probably had to sign the plans, right?
Yes.
And stamp the plans.
Yes.
So let's make a motion for deferral, let's get you a date, and have him or her come in and talk it through.
Okay.
But you are, and usually we ask for a code consultant, or have you talked with a code consultant?
Yes.
So that you can figure out what's doable and what's not, okay? So may I, is there a motion?
I made a motion to defer, which I will stick with.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of October 29th as well, at 10:30.
Okay, so it gives you enough time to get your ducks in a row.
Okay.
See you then.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 972-063-392 Seaver Street. Seaver Street, yeah, okay. This is to make the right side of the proposed driveway for two vehicles. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, the proposed parking is within five feet of the side lot line. Name and address for the record, please.
Eric Haxstrom, Haxstrom Law, 125 Main Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on behalf of the owner-applicant, Joel Rubiera.
So tell us what's being proposed?
So this is a existing three-family, legal non-conforming structure and lot. There's no change in occupancy, there's no extension of any.
Where in Seaver Street is that? What's the nearest cross street?
It's close to Franklin Park.
I know, but that goes on for a few blocks.
Not 100% sure, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So the proposal is to add two off-street parking, which requires a curb cut, which is going to be five, within five feet of the lot line, which requires zoning relief. So we're here looking for that. Like I said, it's a curb cut to add two off-street parking spaces.
Okay, so this building is now under construction?
That's correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Very minimal, very simply, I mean, but there is a 12-foot wide proposed curb cut and driveway, which is sufficient to have two spaces that would not be front yard parking, so it's okay.
So the width of the driveway is 12 feet?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted a community process and received five letters of support from Director Butters. We'd like to go on record to support this.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Calling BOA 976-676-141 Westville Street. This is a new construction of 14 studio apartments under the Compact Living Guidelines. The violation is Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 8, the multifamily dwelling unit is forbidden use. Article 65, Section 9, the minimum lot width is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the minimum lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-toe ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, the height is excessive in feet. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Jennifer West with B. Architecture at 561 Windsor Street in Somerville.
So just before we get started, just a reminder, this is a five-member board, and so you would need all five of us to be in support of this proposal. We have been offering people administrative deferrals to a later date. So you just put us on, put on the record whether you're proposing to go ahead and ask.
Yes, we want to proceed, thank you.
So to my right are the proponents, I'll let them introduce themselves.
Good morning, Madam Chairs and members of the board. My name is Vivian Giraud, I live at 34 Didson Street, and my wife and I are the proponents of the project.
So where is the zoning district this is in?
This is the Dorchester Neighborhood Zoning Subdistrict 2F 5000.
So this is a 2F 5000, so, and what's the lot area for this particular lot?
3,000 square feet.
3,000 square feet, okay, and you're proposing 14 studios on it? And what's the average size of each studio?
They range in size from 260 to 280 square feet.
Okay. And so the Compact Living Guidelines also ask for community space, are you providing that?
Yes, we are. On the ground floor, there's a common lounge, 100-square-foot common lounge. For our 14 units, there's no required size for the common amenity space, and then they are also providing an indoor bike storage room for 14 bikes, and indoor laundry as well is provided there.
And what are your, does this take up the entire lot, whether your yard?
Well, yeah, we're seeking relief on dimensional regulation, so the front yard is a 15-foot minimum, and we're proposing eight, and the rear yard is, 30 feet is allowed, we're proposing 15, and then we're proposing six for the side yard setback on both sides.
And what's required?
10 feet.
10 feet. And tell us about the sense of Westville. Is it mostly two or threes, what is it?
It's a range of two to three. There's some triple-deckers, and then there's some two-family homes as well, but the whole street is multi-family, or two-to-three family.
So it's two-to-three, it's not apartment-style buildings, okay?
And we're on the end of the street, so we actually, we bought a commercial building on the left side of the property.
Okay, and it looks like, are you in violation of the height requirement?
Yes, yeah, we are, we're in violation on height in stories and feet. Two and a half stories is allowed, and we're proposing four, and 35 feet is allowed, and we're proposing 36.
And any other, what are the other violations?
Use, multifamilies are forbidden use in this district, insufficient off-street parking, no parking is proposed for this project in keeping with the Compact Living Guidelines. We're encouraging non-car-based transportation, so we have the indoor bike storage, there's a bike repair station, and then it's also walking distance in the Fields Corner, T Station.
So if somebody is handicapped, because I noticed you were providing two, was it one or two handicaps?
There's two group one units on the ground floor.
Yes, yes, so what if somebody needs a vehicle? I guess they do it on the street?
There would be on-street parking, yes, but there is.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, this is certainly compact living. 250 to 280 square feet is pretty small, and the common lounge for 14 units, is that right? 170 square feet.
There's also outdoor common space, the whole rear yard will be a shared patio space, and that backyard of Butts, a community garden, so it's sort of, actually the rendering on page.
I mean, it's a way that you're actually exploiting a public resource without providing it on-site.
I'm sorry?
No.
The, what would you be able to fit in a 170-square-foot common lounge?
We're just, we're showing some seating and small tables, just for casual gathering.
And on the roof plan, it shows a hatch, but there's no roof deck, right?
No.
What's the hatch for?
Just roof access. There's equipment up there.
And this is no monkey beds in this one here today. Okay, is anybody here, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Qua fan from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Services, who would like to go on record in support. The project has been approved by the BPDA under Small Project Review. Vivian and Elisa has been, received tremendous support from the neighborhood, as well as Fields Corner Civic Association and Greater Boden in Geneva. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in strong support. These two applicants have done all their due diligence, the neighborhood's behind it, and we support the project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council President, Andrea Campbell's office, this is just a hair outside of our district, but due to their thorough community outreach, as well as an innovative housing approach, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor, Sabe George's office. I have been to the units, and I was just saying, I could live there, so that says a lot to me, but we go on record in support. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. The 141 Westville Street project was subject to Article 80 Small Project Review.
Can you put your name and address on the record?
Oh, sorry, Tim Zerwinski, Senior Project Manager, BPDA. Sorry about that. The BPDA hosted a public meeting on May 2nd, 2019. The BPDA voted, the BPDA Board voted to approve the project on July 11th, and also voted to recommend that the ZBA approve the necessary zoning relief for the project with the proviso that it be subject to ongoing BPDA design review. Thank you.
So I have that, still have that same question for you. It's well and good that two accessible units are provided and bike space is provided, but if somebody cannot ride a bike because of their handicap, how is their need being met on-site?
It's tough for me to answer that question specifically, but I do know that the Compact Guidelines do privilege projects that have minimal parking, especially when they're transit-oriented, you know, which this project is, with its proximity to Fields Corner. I do know that BPDA Transportation Planners, BTD Transportation Planning, and the Disabilities Commission have all reviewed this project, and that issue hasn't really, didn't really come up during our review, so unfortunately, I don't have a better answer to that question.
I hope that, you know, as you look at these, and as everybody looks at them, looks to see how people who are abled in different ways still have full access to their mobility and access to a normal life, so.
I think that's.
I will just toss that out there.
That's a fair point, I'll bring that upstairs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Chairman and Board Members, my name is Edward Cook, 7 Longfellow Street in Dorchester, about 300 feet from the proposed site. I observed the model unit that was built to show how these units would work. It's quite an amazing piece of work. I have attended the public meeting about the project, where people were amazingly enthusiastic, and I come to you to support very enthusiastically this project.
Good morning, Member Chairwoman and the members of the board. My name is Jack Wu of 283 Ashmont Street, and I co-own Homestead Bakery and Cafe in Fields Corner. I do want a voice of support for the project. The proposed project could be a new model of affordable workforce housing, and many of our staff at the cafe has seen the property and feel comfortable living in it, essentially as a model. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Could I ask a question? These are rentals, I assume, right?
That's correct.
And what are you looking at as rents?
I can speak for that, and the units are small, as you've noticed, obviously, but the point is to make rent affordable to people who are.
So what rent?
Sure, 14 units, eight of them at 650 a month, six of them at 850 a month, and the rent will not rise faster than inflation, as measured by the.
So it's 650, 815, what does that work out to cost per square foot?
I forgot, I'll have to, probably around three. Yeah, does it make sense? Yeah.
Okay.
I think of it more in terms of who can afford it, and that's what we're looking for.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Before I call the next case, I'm gonna call the 1130s, it's 1140 right now. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 1130?
And just a reminder, this is a four-person, five-person board, so there is the opportunity for applicants who so desire to take an administrative part.
2123 Wyman Street.
For the record, calling BOA 903-629-21 to 23 Wyman Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Timothy Burke, 142 Berkeley Street in Boston.
And what are you requesting?
We'd like an administrative deferral for this project.
So how many deferrals have you had today?
There's been, I think at least one, yeah.
One deferral, and this is a request for a second?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so are you expecting?
This is a second deferral.
This is the second deferral today, okay. Are you expecting closure on this?
Yes, we are, yes.
When?
At the next hearing, hopefully.
Okay. Uh, does a, a request for a mo, for a deferral is, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
Uh, we'll have a date of October 29th at 10:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 1130? Madam Chair, we do have, um, case BOA 889-514-343, 345 Chelsea Street. Is it, is it deferral, um, due to an updated refusal letter? So they are scheduled to be on 10/29/2019 at 10:30. So I'm going to make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And one other case, Madam Chair, case BOA 812-800-66-RA, Cambridge Street. We have a letter from council. They are withdrawing, so I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
This is a deferral.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm gonna, I'm gonna need your voice, to hear your voices. Anybody, um, there's a motion to, to not deny without prejudice? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So now we'll go back to the 1030s. Calling the next case, calling BOA 970-200-1674 to 1680 Dorchester Avenue. This is a change of occupancy to include a beauty salon, massage room, facial room, storage and restroom. The violation is Article 65, Section 8. A beauty salon use is a conditional use in this zoning sub-district. Article 65, Section 8, a massage room use is conditional use in this zoning sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gina Yu. I'm at 1674, please have me call 1680 Dorchester Ave. I'm translating for my mom. Hua Zhaoyu. I'm at 1674, 1680 Dorchester Ave.
Can you speak up, please? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Hi. My name is Gina. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of my mom.
Okay.
Translating for her. The address is 1674, 1680 Dorchester Ave.
Okay.
And her name is Hua Zhaoyu.
Sorry, I'm, I'm distracted by your, um, thank you. Just can't see. Um, so tell us what you're proposing.
Um, so we're planning on opening a beauty salon at that location.
And how many seats? How many, um, so you're gonna have how many massage rooms?
We're gonna, we're gonna have, um, five rooms.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna have a, there's gonna be, uh, two, three massage rooms, one facial room and a storage room.
Sorry, this is 1674 to 1680 Dorchester Ave.
I did not get any prints for the denial without prejudice. What was the address on that one? I'm sorry.
Oh, the denial without prejudice?
1674, 1680 Dorchester Avenue.
Oh.
No, the one, the denial without prejudice was 69 Cambridge Street was the billboard at 11th.
You don't have them? Oh, okay.
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 Okay, so, um, so please, um, so how are the plans for this?
I'm, I'm just kidding.
Okay. In the meantime, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office and Neighborhoods Services. This went through a full community process, including an onsite of Butters meeting and extensive meetings with the St. Mark Civic Association, who voted to approve this project. We'd like to go on record in support of the project proposal.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? How are the plans?
The drawings are, are okay.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Um, does this building have any grates on it?
Grates, no.
No grates?
No grates, no.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 945-787-41 to 43 Alabama Street. This is direct a two-story building for new, for new two-family. The violation is Article 60, Section 8. A two, two-family dwelling unit is a forbidden use. Article 60, Section 9, the lot area to erect a dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the minimum lot width is, is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the minimum frontage is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the minimum usable open space is insufficient. And Article 60, Section 9, the minimum side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joseph Feaster from the law firm of the Kentine Associates, 183 State Street in Boston.
So tell us what's being filed, Mr. Feaster.
All right. Well, let me introduce, Madam Chair, if you would, uh, for the, for the record. Uh, next to me is my client, Bruce McPherson. Next to him is my client, Timothy Fraser from the law firm of the Kentine Associates.
So it looks like a couple of these are because of this, the, the, the way the lot is set up. It's the lot area, I get, lot width is insufficient. That makes sense?
Yes.
Lot frontage makes sense. So tell us about the rest of the, of the violations.
All right. Before I go there, Madam Chair, I wanted to also, to make sure it's on the record for the board's consideration. I noticed that there's some of, in the zoning refusal letter, some things that were not stated in the, in the notice and I just want to make sure that they are, uh.
So was this not advertised currently?
Yes, it's, well, well, it's not a question of, uh, not advertised. There is a question about the, um, I'm just trying to grab the paper. There was a question about the, there was the access to the, uh, the driveway because it is nine in the beginning and it's 10.9 as you go back. That's not set forth here, uh, but it's set forth in the refusal letter. Article 60, Section 8 is cited, but I just wanted to make sure that in the board's deliberations and consideration, uh, that, uh, that is, is, is noted.
So the driveway access, it's the five feet? Yeah, okay. Okay.
And it's, it's nine in the drawing. I got, we'd like to also, if you would, I would just have for the board, two documents. Only have one copy of what I will be speaking to in one moment, Madam Chair, but if I can. Um, the, uh, the side yard setback is, uh, set for, uh, 10 feet on the right side and five feet on the left side. And the violation there is the five feet on the, on the left side because the requirement setback is 10 feet. The lot area, uh, that we, the project, uh, is, is 5,439 square feet and required is 6,000 square feet. So we're 561 square feet below the requirement. Uh, the existing width and frontage of the lot is 3840. The required is 60 feet. And as we know with most projects in Boston, that is going to be the case, those dimensional ones. And while there is a front yard setback that was set forth in the, as a, as a violation, we contend that we have the 20 feet for the front yard setback, but nonetheless, we'll still be willing to accept, uh, that for the variance, if it's in the board's judgment that we get that. What I, what I am submit, will submit to the board are a number of, uh, of documents. One is to show the proposed rendering of the, um, of what the project would look like for, for this development. And you're going to hear opposition from the neighborhood, which will speak to the fact that because the two-family is, is, is not allowed in this particular district. But the interesting part is that there are, there are other three families, excuse me, two families on the property.
Was this, was this property before this board?
It was born, but we went back out once again in terms of make changes in that, but it was about, uh, maybe.
A year and a half ago?
About a year, about, uh, within a year ago.
Yeah.
Yes, it was. Um, what, what we, uh, what we have is that there are other two families on it. There's one, uh, two-family at 18 to 20 Alabama Street, 19 Alabama Street, and there's one at 25 Alabama Street. There is also, if you notice, that there is no height violation is cited here because the proposed project is consistent with the height of the neighborhood. So the opposition to me is, uh, is misplaced from the standpoint of, uh, seeking to prevent this particular project when it is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And I like to submit that, that to the record. And you have, you have the plans there, uh, and with that, I will.
How are the plans?
Um, the drawings are okay. As Mr. Feaster says, uh, the driveway starts at nine feet, uh, and then expands it. Um, that nine, by the time it, uh, hits the edge of the house, it's actually 10 foot nine.
That's correct. Yes. Yes.
Okay, so I, that seems like that would work.
Yes, well, I just wanted to make sure that we don't have to come back if, if, if this is approved later on because if that's a real.
And there's, uh, is there, I mean, the only way to, to adjust it would be to move the front stairs, just, uh, like a foot to the, to the left.
Yes.
Is that possible or is it not really?
I would leave that, if that would, yes, that would then alleviate the violation. That's correct.
Yeah, well, well, if, if approved, we can do that as part of the design review.
And so, um, and what's the zoning in this district? I think I may have asked you, but I, I did not note it.
Uh, the zoning in this district, uh, is, this is 1 of 6,000.
Okay. So is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Whitney Celestin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This is our second round of community process for this project. Um, we held an onsite of Butters meeting where many of the neighbors showed up on June 10th and they had very expressive concerns about that lot itself. Um, the side neighbor, the one that's right on the right, expressed that his basement would get flooded with water. There's a big tree on the property. The neighbors were very, very adamant about opposing this project because of the character of that plot of land when we did the onsite of Butters meeting.
So this is a vacant land and they want it preserved as vacant?
No, it's more so the tree on it, like the, the actual, um, plot itself, not so much because of the character, but because of what they're foreseeing, because of the current conditions of the homes that are there now. Also, we got a letter from, um, this also, we had an Butters meeting and this also went through the Colorado Street Association meeting, um, and we are opposing this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, my name is Earl Falk. Uh, Earl Falk, uh, I'm a resident of 67 Alabama Street. Uh, the area that we have that we live in is one-family homes. Some of the existing two-family were there since day one. We, uh, you know, we'd like to keep it and we don't want our bearings just change. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board. My name is Valma Brinson. I'm at 34 Alabama. I am within 100 feet of the proposed project. Um, it is a single-family residential community. Uh, we have family members who, I have two aunts and a cousin. We all live on the street. It's family-oriented. It's a single-family zone. There's a school. We get multiple buses coming through. Parking is, most of us have off-street private driveways, but parking on the street when it's school days is difficult. Most of the other residents are elderly. They wish they could have been here today. But we just don't see this as a good characteristic for our edge.
So this has its own driveway, which would take any parking pressures off the street?
But it will, the driveway that they're opposing is going in the back of my aunt who lives right beside there, in the back of her yard, which, you know, possibly could be enjoying family sitting. They're saying the park is going to be towards her drive, her backyard and then on the other side. It's in, it's in our back privacy of our home.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is LeVar Thomas. I'm at 37 Alabama Street. I am the property directly next to the proposed project.
On the other side from, um, the lady's aunt?
No, I am, yeah, on the other side of her aunt. So I am the property directly, if you're standing in front of it, to the right. So their driveway will be directly next to my driveway. Um, in regards to the tree issue, uh, there's a massive tree on that lot and there's wetlands that run behind these houses and next to the cemetery. And if that tree is gone, that's probably going to cause a massive flooding to the majority of the houses within the next 300 feet of that. And this has happened before. This is the reason why I have a sub-pump in my basement. So I oppose it.
So, Mr. Feaster, that tree. Tell us about the tree.
Well, and, uh, the, yes, the, in order to, uh, erect this particular project, that tree will have to be removed. We're, we're not aware of the issues that have been raised by Mr. Thomas about in terms of, in terms of the water, Madam Chair, uh, that's there. I think this is an appropriate site and if I might be able to speak to a, a number of things if I can and amplify on what this project is proposing, consistent with some of the housing, uh, which is desirable in the city.
Mr. Feaster, does it behoove you to have further conversations with the, with the neighborhoods?
Uh, well.
I mean, also, as you had, as I had said before, this is a five-member board.
Yes.
You know, um, so does it behoove you to have that conversation?
Well, it's certainly, I know that the, uh, the chair is encouraging that because she is very astute at these types of things for sure. Uh, we've had two goes at this with, with the neighborhood. Uh, I don't think that it will, it will change their particular views. They've been quite strident with regards to that. And certainly would welcome, uh, that overture if I, you know, if I thought that would be the case. So I, I want to at least put on the record, uh, some additional things which the applicant is prepared to do to address some of the things that were mentioned particularly by the director of Butters with regards to the parking. As I know, this board is very much, uh, in favor of, uh, aggressive screening and buffering when you have those situations and that's certainly something which the applicant is prepared to do with respect to where the parking will be in the rear of the property. The, it, the unit sizes are, are going to be 1,177 square feet, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, uh, large open kitchen, living room and dining room. There'll be storage in the basement and as I mentioned, two parking spaces. As is my practice, I'm always willing to have a conversation because I know that, uh, persons who are in neighborhoods, they have been there for many, many years. They feel the character of their particular neighborhood. I once lived in Matterpan myself, uh, so I certainly understand that. So, um, we're more than happy to have that conversation. My only sense is that with the two, uh, conversations we've had thus far, um, I'm not sure where we go, but I would then ask for a opportunity to definitely take the, the chair's encouragement. In order to do that, if we can defer this, uh, if that would be appropriate, then I would look to do that.
You're requesting a deferral?
I would request a deferral. I have to request of, to go back and see if we can have a conversation with the neighborhood, which may get us to a, a place of yes.
Okay, so I have a request for a deferral. May I?
I would make a motion.
Have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Uh, October 29th at 10:30.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 969-856-71-Davison Street. There's a companion case, BOA 969-855-88-Pass Street. This is for 71 Davison, this is subdivided 71 Davidson, Davison at 8,832 square foot into two lots. lots. The new lot for 71 Davidson Street lot would consist of 3,269. The other lot for 88 Pier Street would consist of 5,000, 563 square feet, excuse me, for a new, for a new, for a construction of a new two-family dwelling. Violation of Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. Article 68, Section 8, the floater ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. This is for 88 Pier, constructing new two-family dwelling on the new lot created by subdividing 71 Davidson at 8,832 square into two lots. The new lot at 88 Pier would consist of 5,566, 63 square feet. The new lot for 71 Davidson would consist of 3,261, 69 square feet. The violation is Article 69, 20, Section 29, parking is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, lot width is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, building height is excessive in stories. Article 69, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. And Article 69, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
This is Kyle Pratt, architect for the project, 454 Lower Lavenue, Newton, Mass.
So, you know, just to start off with, you know, this is a nice-sized lot, but, you know, the current, with this subdivision, the current building will be severely happened. There's a lot of violations that have now triggered a lot of violations. And then, so you, and then at 88 Pier, so you're proposing the construction of a new two-family, right?
Yes.
Have you seen the VRA's recommendation?
Have not.
Thank you.
The owner, if I may say, the owner of 71 Davidson Street is owned by Seth Tarjet. Unfortunately, he cannot come. He is currently out of the country.
So are you requesting a deferral?
No, we aren't, no, no. We actually, he, we met with the neighborhood a few times to discuss this. This project started out four years ago, in which it was a townhouse-type building.
I don't, really don't care what it started off. Yes, the zoning is the zoning, so for me, I look at it as what the zoning says rather than somebody's ideas, you know?
Yes, okay, thank you.
So, so, to tell us about the current iteration.
Well, 71 Davidson Street is owned by Seth Tarjet. He lives there. He renovated this, this building maybe five, six, 10 years ago. He lives on the second floor, and at the time, he was a, a single person. He rents out the first floor. Since then, he has gotten married. He has about three kids. So he's essentially outgrown the second-floor apartment in which he lives. So his idea is to subdivide the lot, which is about 800, 8,800 square feet. That lot extends from fronts on 71 Davidson Street, and the back end of that lot is on Pier Street. So his idea was to subdivide that lot, in which, of course, the 71 Davidson Street remains as a two-family. He would then build a two-family on the second lot, which is established, which fronts on Pier Street, which would be 88 Pier Street. So that's, that's the idea.
So then he would take the lot, subdivide it, have a two-family on Davidson and a two-family on Pier.
Yes, he would.
But how does that solve his issue about not having enough space for his family?
Well, he's, he's got, I think he has a one-bedroom, I think a one- or two-bedroom apartment at Davidson Street. That's not sufficient for him to live. So he needs a much larger apartment. So the idea was to build a two-family on 88 Pier Street and actually live on the ground floor and the first floor, and rent out the second floor and the third floor as rentals, maintain rentals in, at 71 Davidson Street, and also manage those rentals. He would then be essentially an onsite landlord because he would be living adjacent to the 71 Davidson Street properties.
Yeah, so from our perspective, I don't think it's, we don't look at it from a monetary viewpoint. We also look at this proposal as something that has long-term implications for the community. You know, it, it'll be here for generations. So can you, did you, did you have a chance to read the VRA's recommendation?
I did.
Yes?
We, we also, again, met with the neighborhood group a couple of times, and we also met with the director abudders. The director abudders, they, one concern was that they wanted 88, we had parking, four cars parked. They said, no, we don't, we want, we prefer to have more open space for 88, park two cars. So we made, we actually made that, made that change.
Okay, so let's, let's speak, okay, so how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are, they're, they're adequate. I, I would be curious to sort of hear from Jeff from Hampton, what the VRA's thoughts are on the...
Sure, Ms. Olick, is, the recommendations, there's contextual recommendation on it. When you look across the street, I believe they're all ranch houses across the street. They're all one and a half, two stories. This is proposed four-story. I think it would be the tallest structure on the street, just contextually inappropriate.
And is your view that that can be rectified in design review?
I mean, that, that's something that if the board were to approve, and, you know, I would ask for design review that, you know, to see if we could lower the height. I don't know why that may not be able to be worked out, but from the, the planning point of view, you know, we think that it's inappropriate.
If I may, there are larger structures on that side of the street, adjacent structures, I think, two and a half stories. And, and height-wise, that building we're proposing is actually similar to some of the adjacent buildings on that street. Not only that, the front setback, which is a violation, is 20 feet. However, when you look at the modal setback, which is 15 feet, which has been calculated, that building also meets, aligns with the existing building. The setbacks are 10 feet, 10 feet on both sides. We can't do anything about the, the width of the building, which is, I think, 45 feet, 50 feet. But those are larger structures on that side of the, of the, of the building. Granted, across the street, there are smaller structures, but on that side of the street where the building actually exists, our structure is actually similar, similar, it will be similar in texture, in terms of architectural features. It will be similar in terms of the, the roof structure as, 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 as well.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. An abudders meeting was held on July 17th, and there was, there was no opposition from the community at that point. Mr. Pratt also did meet with the Pier Street Civic Association, that meets monthly, on about three or four different occasions. And with the new project, other than the one from a few years back, people really didn't have an issue with it, so that's why we wanted to offer our support today.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lee Blasi from Council McCarthy's office. The council is in opposition to this project. From our conversation with neighbors and the civic association, there is strong opposition.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve, but with very aggressive BPPA design review.
All those in favor? A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed, so the motion doesn't carry, and it's denied.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling VOA 980-1456, Metropolitan Circle. Is Metropolitan Circle, okay. This is to convert current two-family into a three-family by converting the existing unfinished basement into a separate dwelling unit. The violations are Article 9, Section 2, the changing from a non-conforming two-family to a non-conforming three-family. Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 67, Section 8, a three-family dwelling is forbidden use in a 1F-6,000 sub-district. Article 67, Section 9, the floater ratio is excessive. Article 67, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 67, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kyle Smith. Business address of 359 Newbury Street in Beck Bay. To my immediate right, I have the project architect. To his right, I have the owner of the parcel. To the right of the owner is the daughter-in-law, the intended occupant of the proposed basement additional dwelling unit.
So tell us what's been proposed?
Madam Chair, presently, there is an existing two-family on what would be the first floor and second floor. There is an unoccupied basement utilized for storage. The intent is to not expand the envelope of the building in any way. Only exterior changes will be to accommodate for fire egress-ingress purposes, additional windows, a potentially enlarged sliding glass door.
This particular project for this board?
No, ma'am.
No, it has not been?
Correct.
Okay.
There was another project at some point immediately across the street that did seek zoning relief and built upward vertically and put a third unit in the third floor. I'm not sure of the exact timeline of that.
Okay, so please go ahead with this one.
So the proposal is to basically finish out the basement, make a third dwelling unit for some more context. There is good sloping, so the rear of the building has full access. We don't have to dig out in any way for anything towards the rear, so we will have a full sliding glass door and means of egress for safety purposes.
So your violations were FAR, the building height, which is an existing condition, the usable open space. What were the rest of the violations?
The rest of the violations, Madam Chair, we have a single off-street parking currently, so they will not be increasing. Keep in mind, we are on a circle, a dead-end, a cul-de-sac, so we have not heard complaints from any of the immediate abudders regarding the additional parking. All current occupants and future occupants are all family members.
So what's the size of this proposed unit?
The footprint or the square footage of the basement unit will be slightly less than the existing footprints, but it will be nine thou, oh, sorry, 931 square feet.
So 931 square feet for a three-bedroom?
Correct, Miss.
And what's the floor-to-ceiling height in there?
I believe it's seven feet.
Seven feet on the nose?
I can't give you an exact number. I just don't have it measured, but I, it's eight foot from, from, it's eight feet from basement to first floor.
Okay. Okay. And so how many bedrooms in the entire building?
Six bedrooms total.
Existing.
Entire building?
In the entire building, two bedrooms per unit.
How?
No, I, I apply it.
Probably three bedrooms.
Yes, nine.
Nine bedrooms.
Nine bedrooms.
Six existing, nine proposed, total in the end.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are okay, although you're showing on the site plan on AO.2, an arrangement for parking, which is front yard parking. Is there a reason why, you've got that fence that's coming across, is there a reason why that, that driveway can't be extended beyond the side of the house because you've got room, you've got 10 foot seven there?
Sure, that is pre-existing parking. Beyond the nose of that car shown on the plan, there is a drop-off and a retaining wall that drops down...
That's not a fence, that's a retaining wall.
Yes, that drops down roughly about seven feet. So it's theoretically possible, but not easily done.
And that's the existing condition?
Correct, sir.
Is that true of other houses on the side?
On the opposite side for the project that was before your counsel some time ago, that is upgrade. So as you start from the street and go down beyond the house, it drops off by probably about anywhere from 10 to 15 feet. So we are, and then a significant drop-off beyond that.
It's true. It's quite a, quite a drop.
And, and so there's an existing curb cut?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Are you in support?
Support.
Please put your name and address on the record.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Coppinger from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted an abudders meeting on July 22nd. The neighbors that showed up were able to express their support for the project and the family. At this time, we have no questions and have not been presented any opposition. Therefore, we would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lee Blasi, Council McCarthy's office. We are in support of the project also.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPPA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling VOA 964-164, 4-Hagar Street. Is Hagar Street here? Is Hagar Street here?
Do you have to have a motion, please?
I'm going to pull up the side away.
Calling the next case, calling VOA 939-266-4000, Washington Street. This is to remove the revisal. The restaurant would take out to this petitioner only. Existing condition, no work. The violation is Article 6, Section 4, changed to the previous decision of the Board of the Appeal. Name and, name and address for the record, please.
This is Richard Saw, address 38 Clyde Street, Belmont.
So how is, you're requesting?
We are the new owners of an existing Domino's restaurant on 4000 Washington Street. We are merely requesting that the revisal be, to this petitioner, only be removed and then allowed to us under the new permit.
So you're still going to be running the Domino's franchise, but it's going to be you?
Same restaurant, same operations, just the new owners.
Okay. How are the plans?
There are no plans, but it doesn't sound like we need them.
Yeah, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? I, I think what we need to do is approve this, to this petitioner only. Is there, is there, so it's one?
To this petitioner. Second, to this petitioner.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling VOA 961-890-8-LIBBY STREET. This is to erect a single, single-family home on a vacant lot. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of accessory uses, a five-foot side-yard buffer is required. Article 56, Section 40.1, conforming of an existing building alignment. Article 56, Section 8, insufficient side-yard setback. Article 56, Section 8, insufficient lot size. Article 56, Section 8, insufficient lot width minimum. Article 56, Section 8, insufficient lot frontage minimum. And Article 56, Section 8, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin Cludier from the Cludier Law Firm located at 1990 Center Street in West Roxbury. I'm joined, on my right, by Dennis and Josephine Sullivan, the applicants and owner of the subject lot.
And so I've been informing applicants that, given that this is a five-member board, that they can take a, an administrative deferral should they, should they need it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that option, but we'd like to proceed, present this matter to the board for a vote. And what we propose is to build a single-family home on what is a vacant lot, and if, on the second page of that, well, the first page shows the existing lot alongside of a rendering. This is a modest, single-family home that is consistent with the intent of the code for residential sub-districts in that it will maintain, enhance, and promote this neighborhood, both in terms of density, housing type, and design. The second page of that packet attempts to show visually the consistency that this home would have relative to adjoining homes on Libby Street. The applicants, the Sullivans, have lived across the street at 11st Libby Street for over 20 years. Dennis Sullivan has lived, grew up in this neighborhood. Three years ago, they purchased this lot. At the time of purchase, as page three shows, it was densely overgrown and non-maintained, and the Sullivan purchased it, cleaned it up, did a nice job of it, and now propose a very reasonable project, which would be a reasonable and appropriate use of this property.
So can you talk, please, what is the zoning in this district? One of 6,000?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And what, and address the violations, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, well, the, the majority of the violations flow from the sides of the lot as a pre-existing lot. It is a 4,250-square-foot lot, and this is a 6,000-square-foot zone. It's a fairly traditional rectangular lot, although the front is just, it's about 49.5 feet, and the back is about, rear lot is about 42.5 with 100 yards on either side. So with respect to the violations, lot area, lot width, and frontage, I, I'd suggest sort of run together in the pre-existing format.
Yeah.
The FAR is a .4 zone, proposed is .6, and, but, but I, and then, I, I'd like to speak to that, but just momentarily, the setbacks, the only setback violation runs to the property on the right. That's a six-foot setback in a 10-foot required zone. The abutting property owner next to that setback, Ms. O'Brien, is here, and she will be speaking in support of that, of this project.
Can you talk about the building alignment and the FAR?
Thank you. So the building alignment would be modal is the 14.5, as measured to the front porch. So what we have is a 13-foot front porch setback, whereas the, the face of the home is 19 feet. We have two feet in the rear to maneuver because we're short, we're within this rear setback... within this rear setback code by two feet. So theoretically, we can move the building to get rid of that front yard setback because we're at 13, whereas modal's 14.5. But that's what paper says. The eyeball test, which, you know, the Sullivans have performed diligently, really shows that the more appropriate alignment visually is that 13 feet. It just looks better. It matches better. It's more consistent with the other homes. So essentially, we're creating that setback violation by putting it at 13 feet.
And then is there a garage being proposed?
No, Madam Chair, there's not. There's a driveway with sufficient off-street parking. And to note, the-- that driveway is-- would be to the left as you're facing the lot. And the abutting property where the driveway would be adjacent to already has fairly-- I wouldn't say sufficient, but some natural screening and buffering. There's a fence line. There's also a lot of trees that have been planted that abut that neighboring property's shed.
So tell us about the FAR. What the required is, what, .5?
.4, Madam Chair, and we're at .61. But if I can mitigate what that would-- what that number is, because FAR, the massing is significantly mitigated, and here's why. The height is 35 feet required. We're at 26 feet, so we're well below that. Usable open space is-- usable open space is 1,800. We're providing 2,300.
Are you then having living space in the basement?
No, Madam Chair. No living space in the basement.
No living space in the basement?
Correct.
Okay, and no-- how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawing's ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
For the record too, Madam Chair, I did provide--
Hold on, hold on, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record in support. We held in the butters meeting on June 25. Over 20 neighbors came out. The majority were in support. There were a few that were in opposition. We then went to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on July 16. Again, majority of neighbors were in support. There were a few opposed, and the neighborhood council ultimately decided to vote 4-2 in opposition. We have received over 15 support letters compared to only four opposition letters. So we'd like to reiterate our support as we believe that this project's appropriate for the neighborhood. And I'd like to give you the support and opposition letters now. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support as well of this project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan.
Vice City Councilor Michael Flaherty.
Council to go on record in support.
Thank you.
My name is Marion O'Brien. I'm headed directly beside the proposed lot. And the house that they're proposing in is very much like mine. I have room on the lot, and again, it's the same size. I have room on the lot, not only for my house, but also for two additional small structures. Some of them have my total support for this project.
Oh, thank you.
I'm Dorothy Power. I live at 15 Libby Street in West Roxbury. And I would like to say a few words, if I may. I know that--
So Marion, are you in support of this project? Are you-- are you in support of this project?
Am I what? Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is anybody-- is anybody here to speak in opposition? All right. Thank you for coming.
I can't say anything?
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Janine Devlin. I live at 4 Libby Street. As you face the lot, my house is the-- directly to the left. I share a property line. The whole neighborhood has opposed building in this lot for years. It's only 4,200 square feet. He wants to put in a 2,600 square foot house. That's going to be at least 1,400 square feet bigger than Marion's house. I'm very worried about the density in the neighborhood. My husband passed away a few years ago. The ambulance and the fire truck could not get in the street. They had to park on the adjoining street. And that was in the summer, in February. There was no snow at the time. It's-- it's too dense. And we have been here, I don't know how many times, about this lot. Dennis leading the charge not to build. Now, all of a sudden, he owns it, and he wants to build. And he wants to put a McMansion in.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Matthew Anderson. I live at 7 Albright, which is behind 8 Libby. And my mother lives at 3 Albright with my aunt, which is directly abutting the rear of the property. And we are opposed. The prevailing standard is 6,000, and the minimum standard is 6,000. And this is 4,250 square feet. So they're jamming an enormous house into this tiny little lot, and it'll impact all of your butters. I mean, all the-- the four letters that you got in opposition, all the four abutters directly, like, directly attached to the property. So we are opposed.
Thank you. So this is a fourth--
One more.
One more? Go ahead. Sorry, your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Vaidit. And this-- my house just in-- connected with this land. I'm a little bit nervous because I can't take this lie anymore. I want to just say for if he built this house, it's going to be for five houses, people. So, so bad situation. Because land's so small, house is huge. And first, who is Dennis, was first against. He's not going to build this house, never. He's always teach us, for land so small, we can't build this house. Now, when he is buy this land, he is going to make just a garden. He always promised us, for he is going to do garden, but he didn't. Now, this huge house, if he build, we're going to have lots and lots of problem. And please note, this family not homeless. Right in Crossville Street to this land, have huge house, where is live together many, many years. And have five bedrooms. And live over there, just a father, mother, and two teenagers. Please, just check very well everything, because many people going to have big, big problem if he build this huge house. Please. Thank you.
Okay, so we've always maintained, and we've always seen in the years we've been on this board of appeal, is that the hardest thing is to build a one-family home with a one-family neighbor. I know West Roxbury has, for years, I remember discussions going back to the early 90s about the 6,000 square foot lot, even though there were a lot of existing non-conforming lots, which makes them unbuildable and takes away a person's building rights. So from what I gather, this is a 4,250 square foot lot, and you're proposing a 2,600 square foot building on it?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so that-- that is-- that seems fairly appropriate for that point-- essentially a .5 FAR, and the zoning is .4, did you say?
It's a .4 FAR zone, Madam Chair.
Exactly. Okay. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion does not carry, so it's denied.
May I ask for a denial without prejudice from the board?
No, this is the way our process works. It gets automatically denied.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 955-271 to Petrelle Street. This is to construct a new single-family dwelling. The violation is Article 56, Section 8. A lot area is insufficient. Article 56, Section 8. Lot width is insufficient. Article 56, Section 8. Lot frontage is insufficient. Article 56, Section 8. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 56, Section 8. The side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road, Braintree. With me is Ivan Hernandez, who's the architect. His right is Frank Termatosi, who's the owner of the property, as well as his wife.
So again, your part, okay. May I-- so please tell us what you're proposing to do.
So 2 Petrelle Street is in a 1F 6000 zone in West Roxbury. The proposal is to build a new single-family house in a vacant lot that's 5,400 square feet. The lot, it's worth noting, that also currently has a-- if you look at the packet that I handed out, has a curb cut existing in the lot. I highlighted it in yellow so you guys could see it. I'll address the violation. So it's F1 6000. We're at 5,400. Width with the-- width in the frontage would be the 60. We're at 52.08. FAR .4, we're .63. Side yard is 10. We are 10.5 on one side, 9.5 on the other. I've given you a board which-- I think on the second page of what I handed to the board, it's a map of the neighborhood. And you'll see the square footage of the abutting properties, but most importantly, you're going to see a checkmark that's placed on those properties. You'll see that the-- virtually every director butter has supported this project. There's 13 letters of support, but you can see on that little map where their support came from.
And is this CPS, the one that was just--
Roxbury Latin.
Okay. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
So the driveway that's coming in is sloped down to an underground garage, correct?
Yes.
Okay, are you, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Can I suggest that you be a little proud of your work and stamp your drawings?
Uh--
They're not stamped.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The drawing's ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record in support. We held in the butters meeting on June 26. Seven abutters came to the meeting, four of which lived on Petrelle Street. They were all in support. It then went to the neighborhood council, I don't believe, on July 16. I don't think anyone, any neighbors attended the neighborhood council meeting, but the neighborhood council decided to vote 4-2 in opposition. As John said, they have 13 letters of support from director butters. I've only seen one in opposition. So I'd like to reiterate our support because, you know, we believe that this project will not adversely affect those surrounding the property. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project as well.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office. Would like to go in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan.
Vice City Councilor Michael Flaherty.
I'd like to send this to the Mayor's Office. Council to go on record in support.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve BPDA design review. Would hold signature until the architect provides stamp.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Calling a next case for 10:30, calling BOA 977-446, 28 to 30 Parsons Street. This is a change to a two-family for-- to a four-family. The violation is Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking loading requirement. Article 51, Section 8, the use is forbidden. Article 51, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 51, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. And just to note, on the violation, when it does say the excessive in height and the stories in feet, it says egress stairs. Maybe you guys can explain that to me. Name and address for the record.
And just a reminder, this is a five-person board, so you can take an administrative deferral, otherwise you need all of us to be in support of your project. I don't know if you had heard that before, because you don't look familiar, so I don't know if you've been before this board before.
Not in-- I am-- my name's Michael Holler, 1831 Washington Street, Newton, Mass. I'm the architect. And this is Hugh Bly, the owner, and his son, John. And I've been here-- I was here 24 years ago.
Okay, so that's why I'm giving you a heads up. Okay, so do you-- are you proposing to proceed with your case today?
Please.
Okay.
Okay, so I didn't hear your last question.
Just the violation, sir, basically, there was a side note to it when I said the violation on the excessive height on the stories and the excessive height on the feet. The comment next to it said egress stairs. And I don't-- maybe Mr. Early can help with that.
Just for now, go ahead. Tell us what you're proposing.
Okay. So Mr. Bly has owned this property for over 20 years, so it's two-- each address has one single unit to make the two units. Each unit is approximately 3,000 square feet, which consists of kitchen, living room, dining room, one and a half baths, five bedrooms, and three other rooms that could hold people to sleep. And so--
Has he been renting those rooms to hold other people to sleep?
He's been renting it as a five-bedroom, which is how many bedrooms there are. But the result is, because it's so large, and the cost of a 3,000 square foot unit is squeezing a lot of people in there that they have no control of because, you know, it's rented as a five-bedroom.
So, well, rentals, you can have four unrelated individuals, not more than that. So--
Yeah.
But that's water under the bridge. So what are you proposing?
Well, the result is it's a big mess, and it's a party house. And so what we'd want to do was divide it up to make it impossible to stuff a lot of people in there and make it more affordable for a family. So what they're doing is converting it into two-- each side into two units, consisting of a three-bedroom and a two-bedroom.
So three-bedroom and a two-bedroom?
Yes. And they're decreasing the amount of living space that could be used for jamming extra people in, because now there's one kitchen and one and a half baths, one living room, one dining room. They're changing that space into two kitchens, four baths, two dining rooms, and two living rooms. So not only-- so they're maintaining the actual five bedrooms, but they're decreasing the empty space that can shove people in there.
So, and tell us about the parking. Where-- what parking is being--
The parking is in the rear driveway. And now, they have four spaces, and depending on the size of the cars that the renters have, they can sometimes squeeze six in, you know, all piggyback, two lanes of three cars. Usually, they have four or five. And the new proposal, the only increase to the footprint is to provide egress from the third floor. And that comes into the back, imposes on the back setback about six feet, which reduces it to a maximum of five spaces.
Okay. And has this particular aggression been to this board before? Have you checked the building jacket? Have you, as owners, come to this board before?
Not for this building.
Not for this building. So which other-- which was the other address you were here for?
I believe it was Willaby Street, maybe.
Okay.
Or Dorma.
Yep, okay. How are the plans?
Drawing's ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. John Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. We're conducting a butters meeting on July 8. They went on to go on to the BAI, the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, received their support as well. We support the property owner renovating this property, and we believe this will address some of the concerns that abutters had in previous years. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Councilor Mark Seale, we would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan.
Vice City Councilor Michael Flaherty.
Council to go on record in support.
Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We supported this project. They have been very responsible property owners in the neighborhood, and we'd like them to see this happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm going to go back to a-- I'm going to go back to a case I called earlier. And Hagar-- is Hagar Street here? Hagar Street is not here.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial. No prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm going to go to the 11th-- I'm going to go to the 11:30, wrong?
Let's, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Take a five-minute break, and we will resume according to the clock up there at 12:45. Board of Appeal is back in session. Just a reminder, there's very few people in the room, but make sure your cellphones are off. And since this is a five-member board, you can elect to go forward with your case or you can elect for a deferral. Calling the next case.
Madam Chair, just the rediscussions for 11:30. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Are there any deferrals for the reconsideration at 12:00? Address, sir? Address? Court, Court is Court. Calling BOA 946-295-327, Cottage Court. Name and address for the record.
Daniel Sinzavaris. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm just looking for a deferral on my hearing day today.
No, I don't think we can do that because I think today we are supposed to consider whether we should go ahead and we consider a decision that we have made. So I don't know what a deferral would do for you.
Well, I think at issue, I wasn't at the last hearing, I didn't get to present, and so my contractor presented on my behalf. And I think at issue was a sketch that was done that I think failed to portray the head house, which we were looking at in an accurate manner. And so what I was hoping to do was have an accurate depiction for you because I think that was the issue with the last hearing.
So what was it? Was it denied or did it ask you to do a design review to deal with the head house?
So the board's decision was to eliminate the head house.
Okay, so we're getting into the merits of the case. Just hang around and then we'll get to it, okay?
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm going to call the next case then for 11:30. Actually, I'm sorry. I just got handed from council here, Horace Street is going to be withdrawing, so I'm going to call it into the record and then make a motion. Calling BOA 919-213-63-HORACE STREET. There is a companion case, BOA 919-215-63-HORACE STREET. We did get a letter from council, they're withdrawing the project, so I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now I'll call the first case. Calling BOA 934-019-154-156-BAYSWATER STREET. Name and address for the rec-- name and, I'm sorry. This is to change two-family status to a three-family by renovating the basement space for additional apartment unit. The violation is Article 53, Section 8. A three-family structure is forbidden in a 2F 4,000 sub-district. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, the number of allowed habitable stories have been exceeded. Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering none is proposed. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking and loading requirements. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Frank. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Frank Del Nudo, and the address is 154-156-BAYSWATER STREET. And I am here on behalf as the project manager for the owners Danny Smith and Patty Smith.
So tell us why you were deferred the last time?
We were reviewing site work at the exterior. Originally, we were just going to put a patio in in the front. Then we started thinking about distribution of the water around the house and through the patio and then percolating it back into the site.
That's why you requested a deferral?
Yes, because we felt that if we had to do extensive site work, that site work would also impact the elevation at the basement level where--
Okay, so you're still going ahead to change the occupancy from a two-to-or-three family?
Correct.
So tell us, and is this, is Bay's Water still in a flood zone or not?
It is not--
Flood hazard zone?
It is not a flood hazard zone.
It is not. Okay, so tell us about the basement unit.
The basement unit is essentially, right now, is at grade with the sidewalk. And the height of the basement unit is seven feet, four inches currently. We will be excavating to get utilities under and to bring that grade down. And then at the front yard, where the main entry to the basement will be, we'll be sloping the front yard from grade sidewalk at about one foot over.
So what, how many bedrooms, what's happening in the basement?
Okay, so the basement currently, right now, is a storage space. And we configured it to be a two-bedroom unit and a kitchen. So a full two-bedroom, eight-hundred-square-foot unit.
Okay, and then is there parking being provided?
There will be no off-street parking provided. That will be just for that particular unit, will be back on street.
And what's the floor, proposed floor-to-ceiling height?
Proposed floor-to-ceiling height will be eight feet, two inches.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ollie?
I'm just looking at them now. They look okay. The access to, you've got an electrical room down the butt on, do you have the drawings with you?
Yes.
Okay, on the new basement floor plan, the lower left is an electrical room with a set of stairs going up. And then at the top of the drawing is an equipment room. Does that mean mechanical or does that mean like gym equipment? What does that mean?
Mechanical. Currently, right there, there's a saw trap, there's utilities.
So which are the mechanicals for the upper units?
Okay. At the, you're talking about the room on the left in the front.
That says electrical room.
Yeah, that is the electrical room. There's the electrical--
Room number six, room number six.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got room number nine at the top.
Okay. Room number nine would be for that particular unit, but also the water heaters for the other two units, so there's a shared utility space there.
Okay, the issue is, or my question has to do with how the upper units get access to those mechanical rooms, nine and six.
Right, so there's a rear staircase in the right-hand corner, accessible from the top floor down to what used to be the full basement is now the equipment room.
Okay.
And that's how they'll access it.
And what about room six, the electrical room?
So room six will be accessed, the only access that's there now is that side door. So the access is, you have to, from the exterior.
So that's an existing condition?
That's an existing condition, yeah. We'll also be sharing that electrical room with, as a trash room also.
Okay, but that electrical room is for all the units?
Correct.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the abbarers meeting, the applicant addressed the concerns of the abbarers, and there was not opposition during the community process. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve--
It's internal, right?
All internal, yes.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Motion approved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries your own second.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 863-411-141, West Second Street. Is 141 West Second, okay. This is a rooftop private deck installation, rooftop common deck installation, and a rooftop penthouse and stair installation. Violation is Article 68, 27 S-5. This is in the IPod, South Boston IPod. Article 68, Section 29, the roof structure restrictions. Article 68, Section 29, the roof structure restrictions. A 12-inch above-main roof, the roof platform. Article 68, Section 29, the roof structure restrictions to access. On Article 68, Section 8, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded 40 feet is the max. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranson, Attorney General of Business. Address 350 West Broadway in South Austin. We are here on a fourth or a fifth deferral of this matter--
Is this parcel before us before for the units?
You have an excellent memory.
Sadly.
It was probably 15 years ago, but it was. It was a conversion of Rodrigo Spice Building into a residential building, a single-story addition, and it was actually close to 20 years ago because my office had been at the time located in Barstool Street. Building now is a condominium building, three stories. This matter first came before the board in December of 2018. I was actually not involved in it at the time, but I've become involved assisting the unit owners and applicants. The last time that we were deferred, a couple of months ago, was because there had not been a decision rendered by the Architectural Access Board. Originally, there was a building code refusal letter that was appealed to this board. This board cannot grant access relief. The last time that this was deferred, I think I abandoned the canyon application for the building code relief. And in July, after the last time this was here, the Architectural Access Board actually did grant the necessary variance, but this to proceed on the zoning issue. So this is a proposal for a roof deck system consisting of, and the board would turn to A101 on the handouts. The areas highlighted in violet are private roof decks. The areas in copper are common roof deck areas, which was the issue with the Architectural Access Board because elevator access is not provided to the roof. And then the lime-green areas are common passages to get to the various decks. In 2018, this went through a community process, which resulted in the decks being pulled back from the edges of the building. I was not involved in that process, but for the length of time that I have been involved with this, my understanding is that the community was okay with this final scheme. The only thing that has been holding us up has been the necessary variance from the AKB, which as I said, was granted in July.
How are the points, Mr. Ollie?
Very nicely color-coded.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Opposition.
Are you in support or in opposition?
This is 141?
Yep.
Yeah. May Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support. The St. Vincent Civic Association also wrote a support letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Opposition, Your Honor. Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan of the Office of City Council, and Michael Flaherty. I'm just due to the FSR when drafting Article 68. The council would defer to the board.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Be consideration. Calling BOA 946-295-327, Cottage Court. The gentleman was here. Co.
Let's move ahead to the next--
We'll call the next case. Calling BOA 923-557-1667. Well, we're going to go the next one. 1667 to 1671 Blue Hill Avenue. Is Blue Hill Avenue here? This is to change the existing tri-vision billboard to a digital billboard. The violation is Article 60, Section 39. Digital billboard is a forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Jennifer Schultz from Goodland Proctor, permitting attorney for the applicant and the owner of the building, who was not able to be here today because of a medical emergency.
So the goal today is to hear this request for reconsideration, but not hear the merits of the case today, but hear the request and decide whether this merits a fuller reconsideration. So this is just to put this on the record today.
Understood.
Okay, so please tell us, tell us what you need to tell us.
So we are requesting a reconsideration of your prior hearing and determination of whether the application should be granted a variance. And the reconsideration is because it is our view, my legal view, that the original citation and turn-down from ISD was for the wrong release, that because this is a, the billboard exists now and has existed that use since 1921, should have been considered under Article 9.2 of the zoning code and therefore also Article 6 for a conditional use permit. And so what we are hoping is your reconsideration will ultimately result in a remand of sorts, back to ISD, so we can start this again with a clean slate from the beginning under the appropriate standard, make our application, engage in a robust community outreach, and then appear back before you again for a conditional use permit.
Okay, so I need a motion just to determine whether we should rehear this case or not.
I would make a motion that we support our original decision and deny the project.
To deny the rehearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have denied the reconsideration of this, of the hearing of the merits of this case.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 946-295-327, Cottage Court. This is a rooftop deck and head house for Unit 1. The violation is Article 7, Section 4. Roof deck, head house submitted, and there's other protectional conditions. In Article 50, Section 38, this is in design review. Name and address for the record, please.
Daniel Sinzavaris. 373 Cottage Court in Dorchester.
So again, as I talked to the previous applicants here, the goal today is to, for us to determine whether we want to hear the full merits of this case at a later date. So tell us, so give us what you need to give us.
Sure, as I mentioned, I'm not a contractor, but I'll speak at it, that's why--
I'll just put your name and address on the record.
Daniel Sinz--
Oh, sorry, maybe you did.
Been a long day.
No worries. Daniel Sinzavaris, 3 Cottage Court. So as I mentioned, this is my second time coming in front of the board. I think at issue here was a sketch that I have here that was done that I think really did a poor job of showing what that had head house would look like. And so what I had gone--
So the conclusion of the hearing that you had was that the project be subject to BPDA design review to eliminate the roof deck?
No, so the roof deck was approved.
Eliminate the head house.
The head house--
Eliminate the head house. So you're here to ask for the reinstatement of the head house?
Yes, and the ask was that, would be that, so I brought, I actually brought pictures of, so you guys can look at for yourself what it would look like. And my hope was that I could go to the design review and they could look at it, the scale and the size, then--
So the question for us then to consider is do we want to rehear the merits of this case or not? Because it hasn't gone through its design review process yet, so that is also there for consideration.
And Madam Chair--
If there is a difference between what the applicant is proposing and the BPDA design review people, they come, the applicant can come to us as bold final order. So given all that, may I have a motion, please?
We made a motion to send the CPDA design review to eliminate the head house. I see no reason to reconsider that original motion, and I would make a motion to concur with our original recommendation and deny the current request.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so go through your design, uh, meeting is now adjourned. Okay, so go through your design review process.